I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with prayer. We, we, our pastor has, has not made it, so let me ask you to bow your heads and follow me in prayer this morning and, and we'll start the session. Lord, we thank you for days like this when we get to come together and serve others and, and as we enter this Christmas season, we hope we all wear the servant's heart that we've seen in example. God, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us. We ask you for rain and we ask you to sustain us and to help us do our best for this community and we ask your blessings on our community. God, we thank you for all that you provide and we pray for those who are in pain or who are in grief as this season approaches us. We ask that you take care of those things that are on our hearts and on the hearts of those in, in our country. And Lord, we ask today that you, that you bless us with, with discerning hearts and, and an ability to, to do our best. We ask that you bless this special meeting with our guests today and we, we ask that all here are blessed as we move forward. God, we praise you and we love you and we ask all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, let me meet these two young ladies for pledge, okay? I'm being joined this morning by Sarah Maka, she's in fourth grade, and Anne Marie Maka, she's in fifth grade, and they're at Angelo Catholic School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good job.
We did not have any proclamations or recognitions this morning, so let me move us forward to public comment. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Let's move forward with those items. I know of two.
Six.
Okay, we'd like to pull that to the regular agenda, correct? Okay. And then we have one more item that, since it wasn't in the packet, we're gonna table for, for a future agenda item, okay? And I'll have to look to see which item it is.
That would be seven.
Okay. We'll pull six to the regular agenda. We're gonna pull seven and table it until a future meeting, so we can take a look at the contract before we vote on it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, under public comment, I realize that Connecticut is a long way from San Angelo. I truly do. But it just tells me that anything can happen anyplace and anywhere. You know, I plead to citizens out there at this time of year that we practice living in a much kinder nation, being aware of our, our neighbors, our fellow man, an inkling as to what their problems are, and being a kinder and more gentler neighbor and being there for folks who may have problems and to stick out a hand, a helping hand. I fall on what my neighbor right here is always saying is we just need to be kinder and gentler and maybe more aware of what's going on out there. And if there is a need for our school officials and sheriff officials and police officials to get together here in San Angelo and talk about problems that we may have to prevent an occurrence that has happened, I encourage a leader to step forward and maybe organize such a group to look into, to help us recognize the needs here in San Angelo. Thank you.
Okay, other public comment?
Motion to approve consent agenda, expoling item number six to the regular agenda and postponing item number seven.
Second.
Okay, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move now to the regular agenda, but we will first, what we do is go to the special agenda and then we'll, we'll go to the rest after that, okay? Today, we have a joint meeting between the city council and the downtown development commission and that session starts now. And the first order under that, under that agenda is to open the session, call it to order, and then move on to item number one, which is the discussion and possible action on matters as listed below relating to an agenda item PL dash oh one dash twelve, a request for qualifications seeking to retain a master developer for the purposes of overseeing development within the downtown development district and any action in connection thereto. So, let us start from there. We have presentation from planning manager AJ Favre.
Good morning, Mayor, council, downtown development commission members. As you can see from the special agenda, we have three items that we're going to ask you to consider today, so I'd like to start by just emphasizing what those items are. Item A, of course, is talking about the qualifications of and the proposed scope of services by Catalyst Development. We do have Paris Rutherford joining us this morning from Catalyst Urban Development and he will handle that presentation first. Please keep in mind that after that we do have items B and C, and those items are both to ask you to consider authorizing the city manager to do two things. One of those being to execute the letter of intent. That letter of intent was sent out to the members of the city council as well as the members of the downtown development commission prior to the meeting, so hopefully you've had a chance to review that. And then lastly, to authorize the city manager or is designated to begin negotiations with the firm. So, we have a lot to do in a short period of time. We are limiting ourselves to ninety minutes. And so with that, I'm going to ask Paris Rutherford to come forward and we'll start with item A, and he can talk a little bit more about how we'd like to handle the question and answer session as well. Thank you.
Good morning. Merry Christmas. I'm Paris Rutherford, principal of Catalyst Urban Development. I'm in Dallas, Texas. Happy to be here. Nice to see everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to come together and talk about something we think is very important, which is the, the ongoing momentum in development, redevelopment, reinvestment in your downtown. It's an exciting subject and would like to kinda jump in and kinda go through it with you, take some questions afterwards. We, we've been asked to prepare an agenda here.
Sir, I'm sorry. Obviously, this is not something I'm very good at, so let's, let's back up a second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cummings, Mr. Edwards, one of the things that we have to do from a protocol perspective is call your meeting to order, and I dropped the ball on that, so, so we're gonna...
Step back.
Probably not ask Ms. Favre to start over, but, but at least go ahead and call your meeting to order and then let the gentleman carry on, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As co-chairman of the downtown development commission, I call our commission to order in concert with the city council.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you don't even have to say Merry Christmas again. You can just carry on.
I'll say it again. We, you know, we've had a few meetings with the commission leading up to this, and I think in their wisdom and in that discussion, everyone decided it was a good idea to come together and kinda run through some of the thoughts and ideas that we had with you. So, we appreciate that opportunity. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about kinda who we are, where we're coming from, and something we think is very important, which is what the role of a master developer is versus a vertical developer. I think it's critical, as well as the role of the city. We also put some information together related to our initial observations on downtown itself. I've got a family connection. That is, my wife is from here, so I'm here a lot, and we've, over the last, say, twelve, thirteen years, have looked at your evolution in downtown, compared it to what we're doing around the country, and there are some interesting things we'd like to share with you from that standpoint. And then, we were asked to kinda run through our proposed scope. I believe you all have that in front of you or maybe have reviewed that up to this point. We'll run through that as well. So, first and foremost, who are we and kinda where are we coming from? Catalyst Development, we are a development company in Dallas. Our background is in finance, economics, planning. We're a very diversified company. And the team that we've assembled here includes NE Development and Construction, who, Andre Nicholas is here behind me. You may know NE. They have a project going out at Sherwood in the Loop right now and an apartment project is under construction. And we currently, together, have a project under construction in Dallas that we're working on together. We have, we have a good relationship there. We're excited to bring that to bear to the city. We also have Gateway Planning to assist us as we, if we need some assistance in areas of land use or zoning, things like that. I don't see much of that frankly upfront, but we can talk through that. The important thing here is that we work together with the city in working through a program, a regimen program, that gets us into issues of teeing up projects. This is, you've done a lot of planning up to this point. Some of the planning, I think, is pretty good, which we'll talk about, but what I, what I think is missing right now are specific projects. So, talking about specific projects, we have worked all over the country in environments like this and environments that are much larger, and we have done a lot of financing, say, over the last few years. We've closed on over ninety transactions or so in the last twenty-four months. So, we, we know where the capital markets are at currently, the kinda projects that, that it's favoring. And we have done a lot of interesting urban mixed-use work. I'll show you some of that as we get into it, but that's our specialty. NE, as I mentioned, has got a, has done multiple projects here in San Angelo, understands the local market here from a construction standpoint, development standpoint, and I talked about Gateway. So, what are the roles, what are the roles of a master developer? When we read your RFP that you issued, we saw that it was fairly open-ended, and one could read that by saying, "Well, it's open-ended. Come in, redevelop downtown." And the reality is there's really two different efforts in that. One is positioning the horizontal. That is, what are the projects? Determining through an underwriting process what projects are. And then, once those are determined, what role would the city play, if any, in that? Going through kinda the difficult effort of, of interacting with some landowners and seeing, "Well, we may have determined that there's a perfect location for a mixed-use project that has some housing and retail, and this is the right location, but if the owner has no interest in participating or selling their property, doesn't matter." And I think in a market like San Angelo, that work needs to happen upfront before you can motivate and induce a vertical development, vertical investor to come in realistically. Some of that work needs to be done, and certainly, we're doing that in other communities in Texas and outside of Texas, and have done that successfully, which I'll show you. So, again, the role of the master developer is to orchestrate a strategy and then help bring folks in to implement that strategy. We may be a part of the vertical development as well, but the, the important thing is that we're kinda putting that strategy together upfront. That's, it's critical. The, of course, the, the city works with us, works with the master developer to kinda ready the marketplace, helps from a detail standpoint. You know, if there are, a special, if there are some relationships that need to be formed between the city and a vertical developer, we would talk through that, how to position that properly so the city, the city's getting the, kinda the best dang, you know, bang for the, for the dollar in each one of those instances. The vertical developer brings their expertise and their capital. It's as simple as that. So, if the city says, "Here's our strategy. This is what we'd like to do. We've underwritten the market. We think there's an opportunity for X, Y, and Z," the vertical developer goes through their own final process to determine, "Yes, we agree with you. We're ready to go. Here are the terms that we'll do that on." If, you know, if it's something that's complicated or, for instance, if there's some land that the city owns or something like that. Or it may just be as simple as, you know, we're, we're marketing to them. They come in, whether it's us or another group, identify that project, and it's just off and running. And the city is really just facilitating the process as it would any normal market-based development, going through permitting, all that kinda stuff. So, there are some projects that we, Catalyst, have been involved in that manner, both as horizontal and vertical developers. I mentioned a project that we have going with NE right now as our general contractor. That's in, in South Dallas, adjacent to the VA Hospital. It's in a very difficult area of Dallas, on Lancaster Road. It's a thirty million dollar project. It's under construction right now. You know, that had five different sources of funds. One of the more difficult projects I've ever worked on, and that's because the average median income down there is thirteen thousand dollars. So, you could not go through a traditional finance environment to get that put together. So, we leveraged a lot of different creative source of funds to make that work. We currently have about a sixty million dollar project under development in Los Colinas, another area of Dallas on a train station. It's mixed-use residential, retail, and office. Similar project in, in terms of the use, adjacent to a hospital in a medical district in a town called McKinney, which is just north of, of Dallas. Similar efforts in a downtown environment in a city called Garland, which is just east of Dallas. I could talk about some of those later, further, if you'd like. And some very well-known projects, at least in, in North Texas, Addison Circle, Legacy Town Center. If you've been up to the Dallas area, you may have seen some of these areas are well-known for their shopping, well-known for their housing office. They've transformed the marketplace since the early nineties based on the delivery of uses. And I think, while these areas may be a little bit different from San Angelo in terms of the scale and size of the market, the intent behind downtown and what I've read in your documents isn't to have an active, interesting urban streetscape with lots of things to do. And, you know, I've seen a lot of momentum in the last few years. There's been interesting things, sealy flats, et cetera, coming in, and that's all great. But I think there's a few pivotal projects that will, that can help pull all that together, so it's working a little more efficiently as, as a place, and it's not sort of spotty in certain locations. Ultimately, we believe that a strong downtown means a strong San Angelo in general. It doesn't mean there aren't very important areas outside of downtown in the city. There are, but the one thing that you really have going for you, in my opinion, that sets you apart is downtown and the university. Uptown District, Midtown Houston, again, we've worked all over the country on urban mixed-use streetscape-based projects. You see some of those projects that I'm flipping through here. So, as I start, we're starting to get into, as it relates to San Angelo itself, you've got a good development framework that's in place. You have some nice historic buildings. You know, a lot of that holds together pretty well. You've got some neat retail. There's been a lot of activity in restaurants and kinda entertainment, if you will, that's happened, I've noticed, at least over the last ten years. That's all positive. And it, it feels like it's at the tipping point. That's my sense. Now, there's not one, one single entity that's gonna have interest over downtown other than you, other than the, the community at large, the city. Cause you have fragmented ownership, multiple owners, and, you know, even if you have some large owners like the hospital, their interests are gonna be different in some cases than the overall interest of downtown to make that a, an even more viable destination. So, that's, that's one point. The other point I'd make, of course, is that, as I said before, even though you have a good development framework in place, and you've got a good, what I'd call, operational framework in that, you've got some good businesses and, and uses that are already working well, they're not completely pulling together in the way that I think they can be. And, and one way to do that is to get more folks living downtown. So, you have a nighttime population, and, you know, the fact that we have a university so close by, it's a few minutes away. You've got a strong millennial generation that's coming up. We're trying to retain that intellectual capital here in San Angelo. At least, that's what I hear when there's discussion. Well, we need to make sure we're catering to their interests and desires. Even in a place, you know, even in San Francisco, or even in Denver, or New York, or wherever, where they're trying to do the same thing, they realize that, you know, the house that their parents grew up in, or their grandparents, isn't necessarily the environment that someone who's getting out of college wants to live in today. Well, the nice thing is you all have an environment like that that's starting to work, and the more we can attract that kinda energy into downtown, the better it's gonna be, I think. So, as I mentioned before, we read through your, your prior planning, looked at the projects that were generated out of that planning, and by and large, I think it's been some good thinking. I think there's some good projects. You know, I think this is more theoretical in terms of where the locations were. They may not make market sense specifically in terms of their specific locations, but I think the, the goal of creating an anchoring series of districts in downtown is a good goal, and, and the nature of the uses that were contained in those, in those project ideas, I think, were good. The issue there, and one thing that we can help provide upfront, is what I'll call a market implementation filter. It's one thing if you have planning with a capital P and it says, you know, "We wanna do something. We wanna have some different uses in here." It's quite another if you're trying to get that financed. If you've got a housing project or you have some restaurants. Exactly where those go, what the land basis needs to be for that to work, who the developer's gonna be vertically to go forward, who the operators are. I mean, all that is critical and doesn't get solved through high-level planning. So, I do think you need to have a, a market filter to take some of those ideas and, and bring them forward. So, I'm gonna run through a few slides right now. We did some quick analysis ourselves just to get a better handle on things. This, I will, I'll preface this by saying, "We'll need to get in," you know, "if you choose to move forward and investigate this further, we'll need to get into a lot more detail, but this is the kind of thought process that we like going through." Well, first and foremost, as I mentioned before, a benefit of, of downtown is it's the regional core of the area. It's, it's an identity point. It's something that Coleman doesn't have, not the scale. It's something that many, many communities in the region don't have. They don't have the gem, I think, that your downtown is with the river, et cetera, and you've done a great job in recent years of, of trying to continue to enhance that. You know, there's a range of densities. There's a range of identities within downtown. As you come off the highway and come in, you've got some typical development that you might see. That's very different than the historic core, and that, that, you know, drives different identities and different users and interests, and why someone would come into downtown in the first place. You know, the infrastructure capacity and where infrastructure is, is important to look at. Good news here is it's a simple grid system. You've got infrastructure in place to accommodate new investment. That's all positive. Sometimes, there are situations where that's not the case, and there's a large area that's underutilized or underserved. In fact, the deal that we're working on right now, we had to, we had to construct about a, nearly a two million dollar piece of infrastructure because there hadn't been infrastructure built in sixty years, seventy years. So, it was far under capacity. So, the fact that you all have infrastructure in place is another positive that, that you offer the marketplace. We also always like to look at, well, what does, what do public entities own versus private entities? So, what you see here in yellow are, is land that is privately owned. What's in light blue and blue is land that is publicly owned. And, of course, you've got the, the fort and all the great things around that, the art museum, and sometimes there may be fragments of public land that can be assembled with a private effort, and it writes some of the cost down potentially, or makes it a little bit easier from a timing standpoint. So, it's important to look at that. It's also important to look at the fragmentation of the ownership. What this map is showing you in dark are properties that have lots, or blocks that have lots of different owners on it. So, if someone wanted to come in and have, say, one block under a single ownership, it would be very difficult to assemble those blocks, cause you're talking to five, six, seven people. It just takes one of them to say, "I'm not interested," for that deal to fall apart. So, you gotta look at, you know, the nature of the, of the ownership and the difficulty of the land assembly. And, you know, you can see in red that there are some areas, obviously, around the Concho retail zone that, you know, that would be a difficult area to kinda put together in a larger block of ownership, just given the nature of, of the smaller lots that are in there. But if you go not too far north of there, there are, there is some potential because the ownership is simple. Doesn't mean that those owners would want to do anything. Doesn't mean they'd want to sell, but certainly, we need to, to look at that. So, you know, this is really for us, but we start looking at lots that fall out from that. The other, and critical, is the assessed value of that land. That doesn't mean this is market value, cause we all know that, you know, this, this data came from the appraisal district side and, and their database, but, you know, we all know that we wanna have our taxes low as possible, and we probably think that our property's worth more than, you know, than its assessed value. But with that said, it's a starting point. So, everything that's in dark here, you see zones that are, you know, that have a higher assessment in value. Well, of course, the reason why that's important is if the land basis is real high, it makes it difficult sometimes for a project to work. So, you know, if we have a, a particular block that we'd like to see redeveloped, and it's in a location that the owners feel like, "Boy, we have a perfect location. We have all this great land value," it may be difficult to make a project work there. So, that's why it's important to think through that. This is interesting from the standpoint of San Angelo. When we looked at that data and looked at what was performing from a tax-based standpoint versus what wasn't performing, there are zones in downtown, you see in red here grouped, where you've got performing tax base. And there are large zones in green that appear not to be performing too well. The assessed value, for instance, of the improvements, the buildings, may have a zero value to them or something like that. Well, that's clearly an area that if you're the city and that's the only hat that you're wearing, you're gonna look right in on those green areas and say, "How can we get that back on the tax roll in a more meaningful way?" Doesn't mean that's the right location, but you'll see in a second when we make a composite analysis, starts pointing you in the direction of where projects might make sense.
But, so, part of that, though, is public land, right?
Correct.
And part of it is nonprofit-oriented.
True.
Ownership, right?
That's right. Yeah. Other impacting features, obviously, you've got some, you know, some historic sites, both nationally as well as locally. Obviously, there's flood plain. There's things like that. Normal things you'd look at that are gems currently in downtown and would need to be mindful and respectful of those gems and, and any kind of new reinvestment that would occur around them. Your, your locally-designated historic districts, it's terrific that you have them because it, it gives us as an owner, for instance, a sense of comfort that anything that would happen near our investment would be done of a level of quality that would be consistent with what we're working on. So, that's, that's all positive. You know, so, this is really an internal slide. It's more theoretical, but when you start layering those things together, well, theoretically, there are blocks in downtown that theoretically would be easier than others to develop based on pricing, the, the number of owners that are, you know, that are present on the site, the difficulty, the complexities related to developing and investing on those properties. Well, now, we get into some of the fun part of, of, you know, where projects would start to make even more sense. We like to think about a place like downtown as having a series of identity sub-districts. And if you think about it, kinda makes sense. There's the retailing on Concho. We know there's some restaurants and cool retailers, Egomires, et cetera. You've got the area around the art museum and, and the fort. You've got the area around the hospital. Each one of those zones has its own identity, its own anchor, if you will, its own reason why people go there. And right now, it may not be completely obvious, once you're there, that there might be some potential to strengthen each one of those sub-districts, but it's obvious to us when we look at it, based on our own experience. And then, you know, looking at particular shops, stores, kinda ground-level pedestrian anchors, if you will, where office locations are basically activity anchors, where that lays out in the context of those identity zones. So, that starts pointing to theoretical locations to look at, which you see hatched as well as kinda circled in, in, in these ovals. You know, the ovals, say, just from a pure gut check, market standpoint, there are some decent locations out there that would help anchor some of these zones. The areas in red are kinda the, the end result of that analysis that I just went through with you. Again, this is all theoretical, needs to be looked at in detail. But we like going through that kinda analysis upfront. First of all, just to say, are there opportunity sites? Just at a high level, ten thousand foot? And it seems to us, yes, there are. You know, I could tell you, we're, we're working with Fort Worth currently on their downtown, doing the exact same thing we're talking about here, trying to figure out ways to induce reinvestment, whether we're involved or not. And we went through a similar analysis in Fort Worth, and there were no opportunity sites. There are a few, but they're out on the periphery because the land is so expensive, right? We don't have that situation here. That's a positive. And, so, you know, there's a case where you've got some potential there that, you know, some, some of the larger areas in the region don't. So, you know, what is market supportable? We think there's a concept that builds on the anchor of Shannon and a medical district concept that was in your planning. We, that's, we think that's a good idea. What are uses that can go with that? Well, there's assisted living and residential uses that work well, medical office buildings. Medical office buildings would need to have discussions with Shannon on what their game plan is. Moving forward, what their business plan is, if you will, what their goals are. Um, and how to better position their assets, um, with new investment. You know, they've got a lot of parking lots out there. It's great for their customer, not so great for downtown. Um, could there be a strategy that collects some of that parking into a parking facility? Um, and opens up land for some of the uses that I just talked about, that makes a linkage back down, you know, closer to sealy flats, et cetera. Those are the, some ideas that start cooking for me at least. Same thing down around the art museum, um, and the historic area around the fort. Unbelievable assets, national, national assets. Um, and yet some of the land that's around there doesn't feel like it's, you know, meeting, um, that potential. Well, that's clearly some land to look at. It's quieter, probably decent location for residential, uh, a certain kind of residential that, that doesn't want to be right in the thick of things. You know, where streets are being closed down for special events and things like that. You know, you've got an office building, uh, that foundation office building at Irving and Concho that's, I guess, starting construction. That's great. That was, that was a key site, um, that had potential and opportunity. But, you know, there's some anchoring, uh, projects that could happen over there that start to connect the core downtown into the west side, more conventional retail area of downtown in terms of the pad sites and such. So another thing that we've noticed here is, you know, there's already kind of a grassroots movement, a guerrilla movement, if you will. And that's happening in downtown and we want to support that. That, this can't be a big corporate effort, uh, that feels too controlled. Um, so the fact that there's already some neat things, funky things that are happening, that's absolutely positive, needs to continue on. Should do everything possible to promote and support that. And then of course you've got the other side of the community that's lived here a long time, like my in-laws. Um, and, you know, they may have a certain feeling about downtown, you know? Well, I remember what it was like in the fifties when the men shop was there and well, it's not there anymore. I wish we had that men shop and say, well, that's not the market anymore. Um, but, but have you been to the restaurants recently? Have you been down there at, when you went to the art museum? Well, yeah, I have, and you know, we kind of like that. What would you ever consider, uh, you know, having your friends, you know, do you have any friends that would, would consider having an in-town place? Uh, to come experience some of that? And they may come in from their ranch or something. Yeah, you know, that's an interesting idea. I mean, that's, that's the classic population, if you will, downtown and would want to have some products that appeal to that mindset. And then hugely important, um, is ASU's growth. And, and the millennials, the young folks that are coming out of that. We, we know of folks that are coming back to San Angelo after they've been in parts, you know, way out across the country. They're coming back because of the lifestyle, the affordability, the simplicity of, of life compared to other areas. That's all a positive. So how can we retain more of that talent right out of school? And, and do we have housing currently in San Angelo that appeals to them? We do, in some areas, in some areas we don't. Is downtown reflective of that kind of energy? Sometimes, sometimes not. Well, the answer there to, to continue to build a, a strong downtown is that answer should be absolutely. Absolutely we do. May not have to be a lot, maybe 30 units. Um, but we need to have more offerings, I think, um, to, to continue to appeal. So when someone goes to Austin, they say, you know, we love Austin, it's cool. San Angelo is pretty cool too, though. We've got a good live music and there's some neat places to go. And I don't have to go to Austin to live the lifestyle that I want to. So to make all that work, um, and we can get into some detail afterwards in, in discussion, there's, you know, that, what I just talked through is the art. The science is making it work. Um, there are a lot of special tools, which does not mean that the city has to write a check to induce some of this. Um, but there are tools, uh, that are available to the city, um, that are unique tools. Uh, new market tax credits, for instance, the city could go after an allocation of new market tax credits to get some job creating uses to land here. We may designate, uh, downtown as a special district where we could collect pools or of employers for, uh, for better insurance rates. For instance, on health insurance or business insurance, something like that. There's a lot of interesting ideas that all the city is doing is helping to facilitate a thought process. Uh, to, to kind of get some things going. Um, you know, then there's special financing, et cetera. There are some projects, I would imagine, that would be difficult to get done from a pure market, traditional finance standpoint. And the city could assist in that. But they, but I would think, given the, the scale and kind of the nature of things, that they would have to be incredibly strategic projects. That may have public components to them or not, may have, you know, certain policy goals that would need to be atta- attached to them to, to make work. So finally, in wrapping up before we get into discussion, um, we've put forth a, a pretty, I hope, a pretty clear, um, action plan, if you will, of a process that we would go through. And I think there may have been some confusion maybe upfront about, again, what the concept of a master developer is. Um, generally speaking, if you put an invitation out that says, we invite you to come to San Angelo, come on in, develop it all. Well, the first, the first question that I would ask is, what's your plan? Okay, what are you offering? Do you have asset, are you offering land? What, what do you have? Or is it just a pure market effort? And you may come back and say, it's a pure market effort. And, you know, we may have some other things too, but come on in. You know, we're, we're a nice community, make something happen here. The first thought I would have is, well, what's my opportunity cost of working in San Angelo versus in downtown Fort Worth?
Right.
Yeah. And, and that's where the dialogue needs to happen. And I believe you need to tee up projects so that we can go, whether it's us, whether it's any, whether it's a combination of us, whether it's whole other groups that we know that we brought in and have done in all those other projects that I showed you. That says, here's a deal, here's an opportunity, seems to meet your needs. We've already done some underwriting, you go do it. You go research and market yourself, but this thing pencils. And, you know, here's, here's how it would work. That's what we're proposing upfront, is to run through that kind of a, of an analysis. So you can see in the phase one implementation action plan, there's nine items in there that we would run through. This is in short order, it's weeks, you know? There's discussions with some property owners. There's obviously some discussions with you all and staff. Um, the, the degree of public input needs to be thought through, that's, that's all great. But in terms of actual work effort, it's not a long time to, to get through that. Um, after that strategy plan is put together, well, then there's positioning that plan, taking it out to the marketplace. So we're having discussions at, beyond ourselves with other investors that we know. Um, whether they're your local or not, um, that does exactly what I described before, which is here's a package deal. Seems to meet your, your desires, your interests. What do you think? Let's go, come down to San Angelo, let's have a conversation. That's, that's really what that process is for is, is positioning the horizontal for vertical investment. And then the third phase is vertical construction projects, like the office building that's coming on, that, you know, is breaking ground. And, you know, that's, there's a role that the city can play, may be completely private. Many times, uh, what's lacking in a city environment, in particularly in a master development process, is when someone approaches the city and says, you know, we'd like to get an incentive package from you. We'd like you to do X, Y, and Z because we're willing to come invest our dollars. And the city says, okay, well, let me go through the package. And there may not have been, they may not have gone through that process before. Sometimes it's good to have someone from the outside, if we're not involved in that project, that says, you know, let me run through that package and, and I'll give you some thoughts. That helps you negotiate and coordinate with those vertical investors. So, so we're making sure that the city's making a wise decision, uh, comparatively speaking. And then finally, there probably will be some infrastructure that needs to be redeveloped as part of some of these projects. There's a construction management process. I know you all have some of those folks in-house, that's fine, but that is the fourth phase. So that's kind of the, the process that we would run through. And realistically, within the next few months, after Christmas, three months or so, uh, we would be done with the initial part of that that has teed up some project ideas that could be taken to the marketplace. So that may have been different than when you all let the RFP that said, come in and just do it. Um, it's kind of breaking that down into a more scientific process. And that's, that's what we have here before you. With that, take your questions, appreciate it.
Okay.
Where is that right now? How is it taken to the marketplace?
How is that taken to the marketplace? And then when it is taken to the marketplace, is it in the same inventory as Fort Worth and some of the bigger cities that are developing? They throw in, uh, you know, Garland and San Angelo just off the cuff. Is it part of that inventory? So who are we getting in front of? And I'm asking questions like that. One of the issues with San Angelo, and it's not San Angelo, it's anywhere in the United States outside of a major MSA, um, is what's my exit as an investor? So I have the opportunity to invest $10 million in this project that is in Chicago. Or that I know is kind of where it is, it's big, there's a lot of criminal mass. Or that same amount of money in downtown San Angelo. And, and say, okay, that's right, you have these two opportunities. Let's say they're both getting, making the same rate of return theoretically. Well, then the question is, how do I get that return? Am I going to have to own this thing for 50 years because no one wants to buy it? Right? Well, in Chicago theoretically, someone would want to buy it. So when you go up to, this is not a, a situation where the market is New York, I don't think. The market is first and foremost, San Angelo, city, folks that are in, in the city that may have, you know, investment opportunities that they see. Um, regionally, state. I don't think this is anything like, uh, you know, going up to, uh, you know, the folks in New York or on the west coast and looking for investors out there. It's not that. So that's kind of location of where I think the likely investors, uh, would be coming from. We, we are included in that, we're not too far away. Um, the second part is, the way that that's done, um, is we would interview, uh, some, uh, brokerage houses, uh, to work with us to get that message out. And part of the questions we would be asking them is what you just asked, which is, okay, how are you going to do this? You're just going to go to ICSE and just blast this with everything else that you have? And San Angelo is going to be a little side note? And your real project is, is here in Houston? You know, we'd ask those kinds of questions. And you've got, you do have a real estate community here, albeit smaller than elsewhere. But there are some folks on the ground that do understand, uh, who, you know, who's out here. Um, and they would be natural folks to talk to you right away. Um, so that we could together determine who that marketing team is to go out and have that, have that dialogue. But is that make, does that answer your question?
Just getting there.
Okay.
Part of, part of the, I guess, from my perspective anyway, part of the background is that some of the ones that we're familiar with doing some type of development, it's always, there's always somebody locally involved in the process. But, but if this, if, if this works, it's a catalyst. It's not, it's not taking over a process per se, but it becomes a catalyst in the process. What, what, what I think we're hoping for is through a planned development, uh, district and through the hiring of a master developer, what we're doing is trying to get more of the local things connected. So they're not working independently, uh, or, or against each other. And looking for opportunities that way, but also looking for opportunities to tie them to others who do development. So that the, um, it's maybe from a divestment or a, um, diversity standpoint, no one is taking all of the risk. Uh, for some of the projects that, that need to be taken on or could be taken on. So the projects can, can be larger, or a project could be larger than the appetite of, of a group here. And looking for ways through, uh, going with a master developer, you're really as, a, a, a big part of that is looking for the network of, uh, developers, people that in the horizontal development or vertical development part of your presentation, uh, could partner with or could, you know, in other words, it's not looking for a group to be, uh, come in here and, and build this and build that and, and invest, uh, tens of millions of dollars in San Angelo only. If that happens, great. But I don't think that's really, what it really is, is saying, look, we're getting, you know, this building done. And then a few years later, we're getting this building done. But when you look on your map, one of the key things about San Angelo and its downtown is the river. And, and if you look at what you proposed, it, it has no tax income. It has a lot of available space. Some of that is city land, so there's an ability for the city to, to play in the development game. And I don't, you know, I don't know what all led to this, but maybe the flood, uh, in the thirties led to everything moving away from the river a little bit.
Sure.
And, and then now maybe that leaves a lot of opportunity for that to be, uh, something that truly is, uh, attractive uh, to investors in Midland, investors in Lubbock, investors in Fort Worth, investors, uh, and so forth. But investors here too, just not all of it. Uh, not, you know.
No, I, you're, you're very well said. I agree with everything you said. Um, and I can tell you that the, the key there is that when you move out of the region, if, if you've got, if you've got a local partner, um, that is putting in 25% of the equity or something like that, that says something, right? You're not coming in from outside. You've got a local partner in place that gives you a, a sense of, of comfort. You know, sometimes once they see the opportunity, they kind of wish they didn't have a local partner, you know? But that's, that's probably phase two or three down the road and they can kind of, you know, pick up and move on from there. What the other side of that is, we're not necessarily looking at tens of millions of dollar investments. Maybe in some, in certain instances, a $300,000 investment in a particular store or restaurant. The question is whether currently, and I don't think this is happening as well as it might right now, is when someone comes in and does that here, is there a coordination on, on the what ifs that could be happening right around the corner from them to make that corner operate a little bit better? I don't see that right now.
And, and I think I left that out, uh, and should have, uh, made sure I, I stated that also. It's also a very important part of why we thought of a development commission was in order is this coordinated planning, planned development district. That, that we don't accidentally keep something from happening that could happen because the pieces don't fit.
Well, imagine, I mean, and, you know, all the great growth that's happened, I'm sure, with down the south in the last few years. Fantastic to see that. I remember when I first started coming down here, people say, well, we, we haven't had new development in decades and blah, blah, blah. And it's just San Angelo is not that kind of place. I think that's not true. We're, we're all the same people generally in Texas to a certain degree. I mean, we watch the same programs, read the same information. You know, I mean, there's, there are similarities there. So what you might see on the outskirts of Austin can happen here, and it has, you've seen that. Um, but at the same time, we need to also learn from other environments where that sucks some of the life out of downtown. The nice thing here is that, that hasn't happened entirely, may have back in the sixties, but it hasn't happened entirely. You see some life and activity happening in downtown. So now it's kind of striking a nice balance. So if we say, let's look at all the small businesses that exist in San Angelo. It's, it's, that is not too large of a list to go through in Cole. And say, which ones of those are location specific? They've got to be in an area of high visibility or they've got to be adjacent to something. You can, we can go through that. And then the remaining eighth of that list, um, you know, uh, there could be discussions with key ones in there. It says, you know, when's your rent up? Let's talk about why it would be good to be in downtown and all the benefits you get. Imagine the concept of, you know, when someone goes to an executive suites, for instance. They go in there, they're, they're essentially a small business and they're getting common services, right? Their meetings, some of their answer the phones, uh, pick up the packages, et cetera. If you take that basic concept and expand it out to the footprint of downtown and you say, how can downtown itself be the place where it is more efficient as a small business operator to do business in downtown? Than it is out on Picka Street or another city? Uh, that doesn't mean that you have to give the freight away, but if there's a new project that comes in, maybe there's some, uh, some small meeting space, small, that is a part of that project, particularly if the city is, is being asked to, uh, participate in that project. Say, okay, well, we need to have 5,000 square feet of common meeting area that's available to everyone in, in downtown. And that's going to be right, and that would be applied to a project that's right in the core. Well, if I have a small business and I, and I see that I may be able to bring my operating expenses down by some creative insurance program or something like that. And I, and I see I also have some other services like this and amenities that are available to me. That would change my mind in terms of re-upping my lease elsewhere. I'm not big on cannibalization. Um, you know, that would be moving people around. But on the other hand, like I said before, I'm a firm believer that the stronger downtown is, the stronger the whole city is realistically. Cause it's the identity point. You know, we don't have interstates. We have the university in downtown, we have the, the, the base, you know, and then great stuff, great neighborhoods that are around. But, but those neighborhoods are based on those anchoring districts, right? So we got to make sure those anchoring places are strong. And the only way they're strong is if they've got jobs and things to do after, after work or at lunchtime. And, and housing goes with it. So I, I agree with everything that you said. It makes, that's, it's good thinking.
At what part?
Thank you. At what part or what stage did you or the group consider policing visibility in our crime structure? To me, to have the ideal community is to be able to walk from Concho Street after a little bit of shopping or say a meal and be able to walk over to our new performing arts building in a nice leisurely stroll without the fear of gangs or any kind of drug trafficking or visibility of this. So at what point did y'all consider the policing of that? And/or the possibly of the location of our police department? Or are, do you feel we're doing a pretty good job in the downtown area? Or does that need to be beefed up? And I'd like to hear how you feel about it.
My, my question coordinates with hers.
I was at your presentation at the downtown commission meeting. And you talked about a connectivity principle in which you have a business here, a vacant lot here, another business. And that is, that's a scary walk. Okay? Now you can address hers and mine at the same time.
And there's a whole bunch of more slides, like the ones that I showed you, that get to this exact thing. I'll, I'll answer your question by telling you some experience that we've had exactly like that. The, it's a coordinated effort. It, it is not. The, it's a coordinated effort. It, it is not something where you would come in and say, the solution's with the police department. That's not the solution, actually, because if anything, if you have an overpresence in place outside of the cost of that, if you have an overpresence, that puts people off too sometimes. It's kind of a, a police state feel, and, and you know, it's that you've got to strike a nice balance. What I've seen work successfully, and, and this is in the context of, if you've been down to the south side of downtown Houston, there's an area called Midtown. I worked on Midtown. And when we first started, that was called the Third and Fourth Ward of Houston. It was a horrible area. Just north of downtown Dallas is an area called Uptown. If you've been through there, it's the hot real estate market, has been for 15 years. I worked on Uptown. And before Uptown was Uptown, it was a blighted, horribly crime-ridden area. Property values had tanked. It was a result of land speculation through the 80s. Everybody thought they had high-rise office building sites, out-of-town owners. Nobody was minding the shop. So by coming in and having a careful strategy of filling in some of the gaps and building projects where you had critical mass of activity, you felt safe, nice streetscapes. It all looked pleasant and nice, and there were cool things to do. As that grew, it became self-policing, because you had eyes on the street. You had folks living there, folks working there, shopping, restaurants, et cetera. And, you know, there's been tons of, of study of this. There's a guy named Paco Underhill, he's a retail guy, is interesting to read, but has, has actually gone out with video cameras and looked at how people shop environments, whether it's downtown or malls. And they've noticed that if you have a 30 to 50-foot vacant storefront in a mall, people will, will not walk past it. They'll just intuitively walk to the other side. It's where the activity is. Well, imagine that and, and multiply that by 10 in a downtown environment where you're not contained, you know, it's outdoors, and you've got a whole block where nothing's going on. You're going to feel not so good about that, particularly if you see some, you know, graffiti or whatever. So the key on that is to, is to focus in on anchoring districts. At one slide that I had where we talked about the medical district, the arts and entertainment area, the retail area, really focus in on that and fill in those gaps with key projects. That'd be the first thing I'd look at. Because once that happens, you can walk in that area and feel good because it's contained and it just feels right. And, and think about where people are parking. So they're not parking over, you know, on the vacant lot area, you know, and then walking by that to get to the museum or something. You know, it's interesting, there are so many nice little gems here or there in downtown, but then a half-block away, it completely falls apart. You know, behind Agamires, for instance, down between it and the, and the river, it's just nothing. And there's a parking lot and stuff. Would anyone ever make that walk from there to the art museum and feel good about it? Probably not. If there was a, a strategic infill development that occurred on that location, you'd feel better doing that. You're two blocks away. It's not far. It's, it's a two-minute walk. But right now, you wouldn't do it because you're having a bridge, a big psychological gap to make that work. It's not going to happen. So most of downtown, successful downtown development, I find, is all in the, the art and science of the psychology of people that are coming down and how good they feel as they walk around. They feel satisfied with the dining experience they had, the, the walk to the car, what they're looking at in the streetscape along the way. Does it feel blown out and you see tumbleweeds going across the street or not? And I mean, you all have done a good job, I think, in the last few years in particular, of starting to right the course more in the direction that we're talking about than, say, 10, 12 years ago, from my memory. I don't go back further than that. But, so there's already positive things in that guerrilla movement that I mentioned that's already starting to happen. It just needs a little more assistance, in, in my field. Now, at the end of that long answer, sure, you can look at crime statistics. And if there's a, a key storefront and you've got someone, if, if you have the budget for someone to be able to walk the beat in, in, you know, in key times of the year and shopping times or something like that, great. Sure. We, we did that in a project called Addison Circle. We thought that would be real important. We didn't need it. And, and they closed that up. The city did after a couple of years, because they didn't need it. It was already working well. The streetscapes were intact. They held together well. You know, folks were walking around. They felt comfortable. And what's interesting about that is when you have that kind of an environment that feels owned, you know, there's people that are minding the shop. They're paying attention to what's happening out on the sidewalk. It's well-maintained. Well, then the folks that, the would-be folks that would want to come in and do something not to do, they don't go there. They just don't. They go elsewhere. Now, they may go behind the building if the parking hasn't been thought through. Okay, that needs to be, you know, thought about. But in general, they'll go somewhere else where it's easier to, to commit a crime than, than an area where there's focus. So downtown organization, you know, typically speaking, there'll be a, a public improvement district or something like that that will help fund additional resources beyond what the city may be able to muster at a particular time. They may, you know, keep up the maintenance of some common areas, some planting strips and things, just to keep the overall feel up. The nice thing about San Angelo is it's not that big of a place. You know, this is, it's the scale of a, of a master plan community, a small master plan community. It's not that large. And you have a decent tax base that's out there. So you've got the tools to be able to put together. I'm not saying it's going to turn into Sundown Square. You know, that's huge. It has millions and millions of square feet of office. But it certainly can be, and if you've been to McKinney, if you've been to downtown McKinney on the north side of Dallas, I don't know if you have. It's very nice. They have a historic courthouse square. You know, there's about six blocks in there. It's fantastic. You certainly can achieve that. You already have a lot of that. It just needs to be held together a little bit more. You know, and I don't think McKinney was planned at the time like San Angelo was when the, the, the horse and carriages, you know, the streets had to be wide enough to turn a whole mule train. You know, it's, it's a different economy up there than San Angelo was. But with that said, that's part of the appeal of San Angelo.
I've got a question, Mayor.
Sylvester?
Let me ask you this. You know, you mentioned earlier that we as San Angelo, as far as progressing forward, you know, the downtown area and, and what will, you said we're doing okay. These pockets, these voids that, that were out there, I guess they are, they are a detriment to our moving forward. I guess my question is, why, you know, we're always trying to sell San Angelo, and we're trying to do improvements downtown, the river now. Why, why aren't more these, more of these investors just wanting to come in here and, and set up shop? What, what, what are we doing or not doing to allow that from happening?
Well, that's part of this initial effort, is to prove up what the market potential is. Right now, someone looks at San Angelo and says, I like it. I'm from there. But if I'm going to invest X dollars, you know, I want to have as much certainty as I can that that's a good investment. And that doesn't say that San Angelo isn't a good investment. But at the same time, whoever is, is approaching them to say, put a million dollars in here, we feel pretty confident that they have another opportunity to invest that in the oil fields or, you know, or in land somewhere on a ranch or in Fort Worth, whatever. And, and the issue there is, is there a professional real estate industry that's on the ground in place in San Angelo that has identified potential and taken that out to the market? The answer is no. I've never seen anything come across my desk of an, of a, a development opportunity in San Angelo. I've never seen anything. I've been in, in Texas since 93. So that's, that's a part answer. And, and I think the other answer is, I don't, politically, I don't know where the city's been. You know, has the city been an active partner with the marketplace? Or has it seen, well, the market will kind of do everything on its own. We, all we have to do is just sit back and watch, and, and if anything, we need to regulate it with a stick. You know, that, which most cities are like that. I have no idea whether San Angelo is or not. I guess not, given what I've seen happen in downtown. But, you know, if you have a combination of, we're a regional center, you know, we're 100,000-plus people. We, but we're not a part of a, of a big metroplex. You know, we're in West Texas here. There's no, you know, there's no, you know, regional interstate that's going by, you know, the kind of stuff that shows up on a brochure. You know, when someone sees that, especially if they're not from San Angelo, they're not going to get it. You know, they're, why would they look at San Angelo? It, to them, it just blurs together with Eagle Pass or somewhere else. Not, you know, not that, I don't know.
That's the Eagle Pass.
Wow, that sounds familiar there.
You know, maybe they read a, a news announcement that your city manager came from there. But does that, does that help answer? But I, the other part of your question that I also was interesting, where I thought you were headed, was, we're doing all these things with the river, but we've got some holes, and that's holding us back. Why aren't we focused on those holes? And I would say, absolutely. Why aren't you? Absolutely.
So I guess my follow-up would be, if we need a group such as yours to come in and really help us sell San Angelo, but, and if we never did, if, if we just shut this thing down and didn't go forward, we would struggle to even make it more viable, would we not? Or you're saying we're doing okay, but?
It's already happening. I mean, there is a guerrilla movement out there. It, it's happening. You know, you've got forces coming together to make it work. If you look at where it's working well, you've got good owners and operators that are right in there, and they have their particular goal. They, they're civic-minded, you know, but ultimately, they're kind of focused right in on where their investment is, and you see it, and it's working well. Well, what about two blocks away where that's not the case? And I think that's where the assistance needs to be. It's not that it, we're at the edge of some cliff and it's terrible. It's not. It's got, it's much better than it was. I just don't think it's meeting the full potential that it can. And, you know, even a place, same population Denton, another, I happen to live up in North Texas, so sorry for all those references. They have a university, not as big, I mean, ASU's not as big as North Texas. But they have a downtown that's pretty close to the university. And they, you know, that university has a strong music program, and they've reached out to the university and figured out ways to come together where, in that case, the music program has filled in some live venues in their downtown, and it has transformed Denton. That used to be just a tumbleweed place when, when you'd go through there. Now it's awesome when you go in. There's things happening. I'm not saying that's the solution here, but there is a solution that involves the university, I think, in some manner, combined with other aspect, with, you know, your healthcare providers and, and small businesses, and then the shops kind of that feed off of all that. Those are all solutions. But I, I definitely don't want you to think that we're saying you're in trouble. I don't think you're in trouble. You're doing much better than many folks, you know, areas of your size around the country. I just think you could be doing better.
You're in a much better position to find or know where the financial investors are in this type project and to discuss this type project and the favorabilities because of those contacts than say we are locally. Or even our local bankers would know locally where to go, because you're in a better position to know where this type money is that's out there for investment, correct?
Yes. Let me help you all. Mr. Morrison?
How long has Catalyst been in business?
Catalyst, we started Catalyst in late eight, early nine, in the, in the context of kind of where the economy was in real estate at that time. My former company, Woodmont Investment Company, I had an elderly statesman partner. At that point, we had teed a bunch of stuff up. We were executing, had done some good things. And at that point, you know, I saw an opportunity. We took it, and we've, you haven't looked back since.
When, when? How long has Catalyst been in business?
Early, since February of '09, and I've been in this business since 93.
You showed us several pictures of several different things that were going on. Were those projects, projects of Catalyst? Or were those projects that, that you or someone else that now makes Catalyst did under a different company?
Some of those projects were, were projects that Catalyst is executing, the first several that I showed you. The rest of them were the projects that I personally worked on in my career.
So Catalyst is really a very new company, less than three years old. And the projects that you showed, that you have shown us, development, very, a very small minority, those are actually Catalyst companies, but they're companies that were done under a different company name.
Yeah, that, that's accurate. What's interesting in, related to your question, is we all know kind of where the economy's been, right? All of my friends, places like Trammell Crow, you know, they went from thousands to tens of people. So in the face of that, we started a company in the face of that time. And since then, we've closed over a billion dollars in development and, and, you know, refinance and, and new construction. And, you know, and we've got about 110 million under development currently.
You said a billion?
Yeah.
I was thinking a million, and I was getting started. A billion?
Yeah, so we, we've been extremely successful in this time period, because I think what we bring to the table is a little bit different than the rest of the, of the marketplace. And, you know, we took a risk at the bad times to, to start it. So yes, you, you are right. We're a new company, and we're, we're proud of that.
Also, we haven't got to the dollars, and we'll, I suppose you've got some slides on that. But let's say we issued the contract the first of the year. The first of, the first of next year, how many dollars, an estimate, would our taxpayers owe Catalyst? Give me an idea of what, where we're going to be financially in one year.
Sure.
Are you going to go into that?
I'm happy to.
Then I can hold that.
Let's hold that. Let's hold that. Let's see what else you have. Go ahead.
Still have a few more. I see San Angelo. I see our glass is half-full. I don't see it as half-empty.
I agree.
And we've got two bankers in here right now that are leading bankers in our community. We also have some, some entrepreneurs in this council that, in this area that are heads, heads above a lot of people. I also have a lot of faith in our realtors. I have a lot of real faith in our, in our investors and our insurance and our entrepreneurs. So I see what we have in San Angelo. I think our glass is half-full. And I remember downtown San Angelo, when it moved in 1979 to the mall, that's when San Angelo died, because a lot of our major stores moved out. It happened in a year's time when they went to the mall. I have seen in the last five years, there's, there's a 100% improvement would not be a good figure, because it has just exploded.
Yeah.
I think that our bankers and our entrepreneurs and our investors and our real estates and our developers have done a tremendous job. And I think they're on the right path. And I really can't see what you are offering us that is any different than what we have already done. And you spoke about Shannon and the parking garage. Wonderful idea. Shannon told that to us six months ago when they came in here with the plan. They already have a plan of a parking garage. You talked about the different things that the city could do. We're already offering tax abatements. We're already offering tax incentives. We're already offering infrastructure incentives. We already have a development corporation that will look at any business that will come through. We've got bankers and developers and real estate agents that are doing exactly what you proposed to do. And it's not going to cost us, and I wanted a figure, well, that's why I asked you about the dollars. I wanted a figure to compare. It's not costing us those figures, but yet we are getting what we want. So I, I, I'm just not sold on, on anything you're doing that we're not already doing and that it is worth the taxpayers' money.
I appreciate that, and that's, you know, I understand that sentiment. It makes sense to me. All I can tell you is kind of what we have to offer, and that is our experience in making areas that are working or areas that aren't working work even better. And, you know, I showed you a few. I think you all have checked our references. You've talked to places that we've interacted with. They've, I presume they've come back positive, you know, and said, boy, they added a lot of value to our effort. But I can tell you one thing for sure. I wouldn't be here had the successes that you've already experienced had not occurred. I wouldn't be here right now, because sometimes, you know, you've got to kind of think through an opportunity where you know you can add benefit. You know you can add value and make it work even better by working with the folks that are on the ground. That's why I'm here. If not, I'd be working on a redevelopment in, in a, in an environment that, you know, has a much, much more critical mass kind of behind it. To some of your other points, you are absolutely right that you've got a good, stable of folks on the ground. Absolutely right. The fact that you have bankers on a commission, the fact that you have a downtown commission in the first place is huge. That's important. One of the first things that we would do after we had kind of teed up some, some project ideas to kind of, you know, bounce off, if you will, on brainstorming, one of the first things we'd do is to meet with your local bankers, is to meet with the local real estate community, talk about those projects with them and say, have you thought about this? Some of them will say, absolutely. We're just in with the city six months ago. We said, okay, what's your implementation strategy? And they'd say, well, we're going to come in here, we're going to set up a parking district. We're going to sell bonds. We're going to get that, you know, that garage going. And then we'd say, okay. Have you thought about maybe positioning that garage this way, so you can get a little more efficiency and, and bring in some residential product? Oh, and by the way, you know, we've closed a ton of transactions with HUD recently, all market rate. And they have interest in, in communities like San Angelo, because they see the future in it. How about leveraging some of those insurance bag dollars to, to go with that garage, so you're getting a better bang? Sometimes, unless you've gone through that dozens of times, those ideas don't pop up, you know? And I think that's part of the benefit, is just best practices from around the country that we've been involved in. And beyond that, that's what we offer, you know, is, is creative thinking. And I think the places that we've worked on speak for themselves.
Mr. Hirschfeld?
I'm excited about where we stand. I think we do have a great corral of people here, sitting in front of us, representing the community in, in all the districts and areas that, that Mr. Morrison is talking about. But with that said, I mean, I agree, I think that we need one step more. And I believe that, and I'm, I'm very pleased with your presentation. I'm happy with the presentation. I think it, it, it is that one step more that can help tie all this stuff together. One of the key aspects that I see bringing it together, I think you guys hit it, is, you know, there's, there's, there could be funding in San Angelo, but there may not be funding enough whether they want to spend the entire allotment. Maybe it's just a 10%, a 25%, but just, it's a piece of the pie. And I think that's a, that's a fair thing. So I, I see one of the great advantages of what you bring is... So I see one of the great advantages of what you bring is funding, is financing, is partners, is players from outside the community. And I think, you know, when I look at some of the growth that happens outside of the city, in other, in some of the metropolitan areas you're talking about, that's what you have. You have a lot of money that's coming in from other areas, and it all depends upon, you know, how far that is, but I think that's a good thing. I think this is a very, very positive step. I would like to hear from the commission. I really would. I would love to hear, they've been going through this work for, what, six, nine months? And I would love to hear y'all's opinion on this thing.
Okay, let me recognize two council members and then bring the commission on board. And so Ms. Farmer?
Well, let me clarify something, and I know that a couple of people on the commission know that I understand. I was not intending to insult you, that you didn't have the monies to fund. You do know that I understand, you may not have the funds, the percentages, to handle a project of this size, and piecemealing it is not the ideal situation. So what I was simply suggesting is there's a larger source of funding, and maybe a one source for everything, and I think you, as the commission, recognize that, and I do applaud you, and I agree with everything he said, and yes, I'd like to hear the commission.
More people being interested means more possible business for local bankers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
You know, I enjoy this topic, because my degree is environmental design, so it's kind of an architecture and environment, the entire block. And then I went to Angelo State University and almost got my MBA. And I have one prof from A&amp;M tell me, those two don't go together. Well, they do go together. This is the, you know, the epitome of how they do go together, so I really enjoy this. I wanted to respond to Mr. Morrison, and he can hear me, he's in the back, he can hear me. You know, developers amplify positive trends. And so when a trend is positive, like it is in San Angelo, and we're almost at the tipping point, this is the point at which we want to make it attractive to them, and we do that, it's an evolution, and we want to achieve what I call runaway. It's our brain is an example of runaway. It's huge compared to other animals. Peacocks have this beautiful set of feathers. Those are runaway processes in nature, but we do it in business as well. And if we can achieve a runaway, then what we do is we lower the risk, and we increase the opportunities to the point that San Angelo is a place where people, it's an attractive place to invest. Okay? The more attractive it is to invest, the more monies we see come in here. Our own money, we, I, Alvin, whoever that lives in San Angelo can invest into our own community and also make money. So this is good for everybody, but it takes an outside help and expertise from somewhere else. We need the inventory of mines, and we need to expand it beyond our city, and this is where you come in and attract outsiders to help us and invest with us. It's all about making money and improving our economy and quality of life and downtown vibrancy, you know, spills out. It's all about that. This is right down the middle for our city, and this is going to be very, very productive.
Okay, Mr. Silvers, and then I'll...
Just real quickly, I have family in Plano, and I have business at the Dentons and McKinnys and Allens and all that, and I've always oohed and awed and wondered, wow, will we ever get there? So, you know, we're here, and so be it.
Okay. Let me ask the commission to weigh in and help with the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim Cummings, and I'm one of your co-chairs of our Downtown Development Commission. You know, all of your questions and comments have been very, very good. I don't know how many of you have been to Greenville, South Carolina. I was there a number of years ago, and as I stood there along the river that runs through their downtown, I thought to myself, this could be San Angelo. What they've done with their retail and their residential development along that river, we have ever much as the assets they have that we can develop. Mrs. Farmer hit it. Mr. Alexander, and your other comments have been well said. I was in the banking business for 40 years. Best banker I ever worked with, Jim Raymond. Absolutely. And I think Gary Cox exhibits the same strengths. But what we need at this point in our life in San Angelo is what this man and his company can give us. It's the networking outside of our boundaries to where there's capital, whether it's on the East Coast, the Southeast, up from Midwest, West, I don't know where it is, but he knows where those folks are. He knows how to network with them. He knows how to sell San Angelo. Not saying that Mr. Raymond couldn't do it, or Mr. Cox. It'd take him a longer time to develop that network. He's already got it. So he positions us to move forward and to really show progress for our city. Mr. Edwards is our co-chair. I'll ask him if he wants to make a comment. If not, this wonderful commission that you've got, and I'll ask him to come forward if they have a comment or not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can pull your mic up, or you can let Mr. Cummings be the spokesman, whatever you'd like to do. I just want to give you any opportunity you need.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. I didn't come to speak to you, but now that I'm here, I will. The glass is half-full, and we've come a long way in a comparatively short period of time, but we will not do it by ourselves. What has taken place is positioned us to let these folks take where we've come and take us where we want to go from there. I think our commission pretty unanimously feels like that this is a good thing, and we endorse it and support it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to just say something. I'm not so involved with the banking and so on, but I am very impressed with what our city has already done as far as planning and talking to the community about what we want in San Angelo, and putting together, what I have at home is a notebook this thick of all the work that the city employees have done. And a whole lot of, they've done a whole lot of great work, and I think what Mr. Rutherford's group does is help us take all that good information, and where we don't have that expertise of knowing how to bring groups together, and how to draw on outside investors or outside work, and how to plug in, you know, there's a lot of expertise that he and his company have that we just don't have access to in our community. We have the love and the energy to really want this done, and if we can get someone like him or his group to come in and channel all that energy, and put it to work, and coordinate, fill in those holes, and really make the project a well-planned project, rather than just a haphazard, even though our heart's in it, not well-done kind of project, is how I look at it. So, Mr. Rutherford, maybe you could kind of talk about at some point, the plan that we already, all the work that the city's already done, and what you're intending to do with that, to help us all tie into that as well.
Assuming that everyone has had an opportunity to say what they'd like, I'll bring him back in. Okay, sir.
Yeah, as when we were first talking, and the beginning part of this presentation, you know, we have gone through your plans, and the general ideas of making strong connections between your anchoring districts, that's key. What I think hasn't happened in there is going through an inventory of the real estate that is underlying those connections, and then looking at the market, and how, and areas within that underlying real estate, how that can plug in together with the marketplace. What I've noticed in San Angelo is there's been a phenomenal process that the local banking and real estate industry has done in getting a lot of things happening out on the edge. And you see, you know, some nice retail pad sites and power, you know, big box stores and things like that. That's all great. It's good for the economy. But if you, but if that low-hanging fruit, is what I call it, is allowed to occur within downtown, it erodes the fabric of downtown. So it takes you into an area of real estate that is unique, and that is urban reinvestment, urban development, mixed use, et cetera. That is an anomaly. Doesn't happen too often, and you all have some buildings that you're working off of. But the key there is to match up specific locations with specific users. You know, we're not going to know who those users are necessarily before we sit down and have a discussion with the folks that Mr. Morrison was talking about. We need to have that dialogue, but I do know that, you know, whether it's bringing Roger Stahl back into Addison Circle after the initial phase was done, and he put his headquarters' office building in there, and we had them transform the way that office building plugged into the residential that we're working on, that made that place work. Same thing by bringing Trammell Crow into downtown Garland. You know, similar deal in a place called De Soto. So I think it is leveraging relationships. I would like to bring up, if you don't mind, Andre Nicholas, who is our partner here in the process, because both of us have interests as investors in San Angelo as well, and I think Andre wanted to make a few comments as well.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Andre Nicholas with NE Construction. Simple question. How many projects in the last five years has San Angelo developed downtown San Angelo between $10 and $30 million? Excluding the city hall? Yep, excluding the city hall, excluding the hospital. And like it was spoken, yep, the bankers do a great job. There's limited resources for them. This is where we come in, where we have the network. We have the ability to bring finances, developers. Also, we are ready to put our money where our mouth is. We feel like San Angelo has what it takes, and we're willing to put our money there. And it's going to take somebody to kick-start it, so the domino effect can happen, and that's what we're here for.
Okay, thank you.
We want to make sure we're underwriting that project properly as well, so that when they put their money in, it's placed in a position that's proper and is going to make money for the city as well as our group, so that's part of our role, too.
Sir, you've basically gone through the proposed scope of services, and the next ask really is item B, the letter of intent authorization, and that needs to take us to the point of what we would be getting, what the letter of intent covers, those kinds of things. So let me ask you to move us forward.
Sure. Yeah, we've tried to keep it pretty simple, and I will tell you this, that, you know, if we were a planner, and we were coming in, and your RFP was for a consultant to come in and put a plan together, my guess is that's probably a $200,000, $300,000 fee. It's a lump sum amount paid over, you know, maybe a 14, 16-month period. That's not what we're proposing here. What we're saying is, we are interested as investors, developers with NE ourselves, to look at a deal in San Angelo, as well as marshal the resources of others. So we know there's some underwriting that needs to happen, so what we're looking at is to go through that initial process to determine what those deals, deal or deals are. That's over a few months. That's about $68,000, which we think is, you know, we're taking risk on the other side. That's basically covering costs essentially, to go through that underwriting and the market-related work. You know, there may be some additional amount. I don't see there's going to be much more than that, you know, but if, for instance, there's some hiccup or something in zoning, and we need to engage an attorney, there may be a few more thousand dollars that you can see that we put in there. So that tees up a vertical development opportunity. The second piece of that, then, is to take that to market, is to put the marketing plan together, work with your local realtors as well as regional brokerage houses, and then go out and market those projects, whether they're for our own account or for others, working with others, going in and talking to some regional developers or even local folks. That's a process. We don't know exactly where that is right now, so we put that together really as a retainer at $10,000 a month. My guess is that, I mean, frankly, at the end of the initial process, if it doesn't look like there's a project there, we're not moving into phase two, realistically. It doesn't make sense, right? I don't think that's the case. I think there is an opportunity. But to answer the question, you know, you'd be looking at about $68,000 over the next several months, and then, let's say, until the first development agreement is done, at $10,000 a month, let's say that takes 90 to 120 days to kind of negotiate, put together. Okay, that's $30,000 to $40,000. You know, then beyond there, as it gets into a vertical project, I don't know what that project is, so I can't forecast that, you know, what that would be, if there would be any additional expense or not. Our goal is to try and be as efficient as we can.
From the perspective either of the commission or from your perspective, Mr. Rutherford, walk us through the taxpayers' investment and rate of return, or not necessarily rate of return, but where does the taxpayer's return come from? Okay? So we spend $68,000 or $75,000 or whatever on this phase one. We decide there's not to be a phase two. That money's sunk costs, because we've decided there's not a phase two. Maybe we've learned something and gotten some value from that, but, okay. But if we go to phase two, and we start through a horizontal development positioning process, somewhere in there, there's money being spent with you, $10,000 per month, and the consultant fee if there's a sale, and so forth, but there starts being a return for the taxpayer as projects are developed, as properties are brought on the tax rolls, so I want you to walk us through
Sure.
that part of the process, and help us understand how we're taking care of the taxpayers' money.
Well, and that's good, and we are absolutely all for that. Of course, the first part, at the end of phase one, is you've got a strategy plan in place. Whether you choose to move forward with us or any other group, you have a strategy plan that's in place that is fundamentally based on the market, good or bad. It's based on what we see. I can tell you, you know, implementing a project in one of the worst areas economically in Texas right now, the area I mentioned before in South Dallas, if we can make a project work there, we can make a project work just about anywhere. So I am an optimist, glass-half-full type person, too. So to answer your question, the first part of that is you've got, in a sense, a business plan for the next several years on particular deals to go after, and there's, and we've kind of teed things up so that maybe the local real estate market takes it from there and runs with it. That would be great. Maybe we need to jump into that second phase and continue to assist. That's fine, too. So there is a tangible product that's outlined in that scope, that has some market work. It's got essentially a business plan related to projects upfront. As we move forward into a deal, that's where the tax-based generation comes into play. So for instance, in that difficult project that I mentioned before, that's a $30 million project. That's a $30 million value that's hitting the tax rolls in Dallas. You know, we, in that case, you know, we were debt-constrained on that. Only 51% could be in debt. So there's a lot of money that's going into that project. But in terms of value and the impact that's making on its surroundings, it's a huge value. Uptown Dallas has generated now nearly $4 billion to the tax base. That all came from a strategic plan upfront. Can I quantify exactly what that is for San Angelo? Absolutely. Once, when we get into it and start looking at what the uses are, that's not hard to do, and that would be a part of the initial phase. And then finally, with phase three and four, that's when we know exactly what the project is. Let's say it's a, you know, Andre mentioned, he used the term, you know, $20 million project. When does that happen in downtown? I know he's got a thought in the back of his mind where he came up with that figure. But if you look at a, let's say, a, you know, medium-sized, mixed-use project that could occur on the river, for instance, you could be looking at something in that range of investment. And, you know, if you're looking at a rate of return, and you've got $20 million of value that's hitting the tax rolls, and you've got $70,000, $80,000 of strategy work that goes into that, you know, that's not a bad return on those dollars, in how I think, you know, think about things.
Mr. Morrison?
So check my math here, please, sir.
Okay. I'll get my calculator.
I'm seeing an initial lump sum of $68,000. I'm seeing 12 months at $10,000 a month. For 12 months, $120,000, for a total hit to the taxpayer of $188,000, with a possibility of another $20,000 in miscellaneous expenses. So I'm looking at, through phase two, I'm looking at $208,000. Did I do it right?
No, I'm thinking phase two is probably about six months, so it's not a full year, I don't think.
But this $10,000 per month, does that start on month one, or does that start on month six?
No. That starts at the end of phase one, so you have $68,000, then you start. My guess is that's in the three-to-six-month range.
68 and 60.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, so we've got 128 plus a possibility of 20 more. $150,000 is what we're looking at for one year. And who pays this? Is it the city? Is it our investors? Who pays this money?
The city.
The taxpayer.
Correct, taxpayer.
So the taxpayers are going to get hit for $150,000 in one year's time, with a hope of a return on investment. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Could I ask Mr. Dane, where would the money come from? Just like to know where the, what checkbook?
It'd come from one of those grants over there. Just teasing.
Which bucket?
We have not set the money aside for this yet. We have gone in with the idea that we would try to put a package together, including resources for this type of thing, plus others, when we knew what the scope would be. What kind of scope are we looking at? What kind of objectives would we have for this entire project? Then we would be able to determine what kind of resources were necessary, and then where they would come from.
How does our commission see as to where the money would come from to pay for it?
Pardon me?
The commission? Where did you perceive the money to come from? I'll ask them straightly, Mr. Cummings.
Without qualification, the city council has the checkbook. So that's, we'd be looking to you.
Well, there is another checkbook. There is a half-cent sales tax, economic development checkbook.
Yes, sir. And we'd leave that up to you.
Seems like it would come from there just off the cuff, knowing nothing about what their entire budget is necessarily right now.
And let me say one thing, and this was brought up. Here in San Angelo, we are so far ahead of some other communities, one of which I lived in previously, that spent 300,000 just to come up with a master plan, and then multiples of times the 10,000 per month for a master developer in their city. So what's being put in front of you is very economical, in my view.
Thank you.
Can I ask what we're, I'm a little confused on how this is going, but to me, what we're trying to do is, what we're looking at is approving phase one. Is that a correct statement?
I think what you're being asked to approve is for you all to come in and get into the details on a specific scope that nails that exactly that. We've been asked to outline in the letter of intent, you know, how we see a process going. So you would be approving the general process, but, you know, if you all came back to us and said, you know, "We're just going to get into the initial phase here. We need to work out exactly what that is, and we'll come back and look then." We're fine with that. I mean, again, we're, this, from our standpoint, the in-run here is for us to determine a vertical project that we can go forward on, and we're both sharing in the risk of the underwriting expense. That's essentially what this is. At the same time, we're helping you with non-project-related, larger, broader ideas that capitalizes on our experience. That's why we think it is less than you'd see in other situations. But you may come back and say, "You're not going forward past phase one without authorization to council." That's all fine with us, however you want to do that. But I've given you a scale of what I think it probably is over the next year.
So really, what we're looking to approve, the item A, B, and C, is to, is the scope, approve a letter of intent, and then for negotiations, to sign a contract with Catalyst. And so then, am I correct in that?
Right. Understand, from a staff perspective, the first thing that we're trying to accomplish today is to make sure that both the groups that we have here are looking at the scope and telling us what needs to change with it, or if it is acceptable as is, because we can't move forward without knowing that everyone has the same expectation. Once we've accomplished that, and we're asking you for that direction, then we're asking you to give us the permission to enter into negotiations, so that we can both work with the consultant and negotiate a contract, and work internally and determine where we need to identify money sources for the project.
So let me go ahead and take it from here and say, I'll make them, can I, you need to? Go ahead.
I need to make one thing clear.
Yep.
You said something for authorization for staff to execute a contract.
Correct.
I believe that is not what's in front of you. To negotiate...
Okay.
That's correct. It's basically the letter of intent.
We would not be authorized under these actions to execute the contract before we came back, nor would we be interested until we've identified possible funding sources and cleared those with you. We need to come back for contract, ultimate contract approval, and for approval of funding sources.
Okay. I'll go forward and make an emotion to approve item one, A, B, and C, and in moving forward with phase one.
Okay. With...
And I will second this question.
And I'd like to go to phase two, but I'd like to kind of get a heads-up to know we're here where it's a go, no-go type question, and so I'd...
So you want to revisit right before phase two, after phase one?
But that could be a...
Right, and I, but I'd like, if it's feasible, and it, the go, no-go looks good, then we need to, then I want it to continue forward.
Okay. Hang on just a moment, I'm going to get his clarification. Okay, so what I got was a motion that approved items one, A, B, and C, but on the scope of services specifically restricted it to phase one of the scope of services. Okay? Is that what I heard?
Can I make a suggestion that we can make phase two an option, that we execute or approve, therefore they can negotiate on it, write the contracts, but they can't execute it without our approval?
I can go with that, yeah.
I can second that also.
I could do that.
But you can even clarify that phase one is anywhere between one and six months, or...
Well, it's as presented.
As presented, okay.
Okay, now, I have a motion that we approve items one, A, B, and C. See...
Fully accepting?
Fully accepting phase one, and allowing the negotiation for phase two, but not the moving forward with phase two without specific permission after phase one.
That makes sense.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on that motion. Do I have any further input from council? Mr. Morrison?
Before I am willing to spend 150,000 or even 68,000 of the taxpayer money, and before I know where the city staff is going to get this money, where it's going to come from, how they're going to pay for it, I'd like to, I'd like to put this off till next meeting and read this. We've just seen this. I'd like to study this a little bit. I'd like to talk to some people. I'd like to talk to some investors. I'd like for Michael and the rest of the city staff to get us some absolutes on where the money's coming from, how we're going to pay for it. I see no reason to jump in this thing today when we don't have everything before us. So I'd rather, I would rather wait on this.
Okay.
How motion stands?
Further, further input from council?
Well, it's my understanding, though, we're not executing a contract. It's a letter of intent, and so all his questions will be answered because we're giving them permission to go answer those questions.
Okay.
And I don't believe all of these professionals that serve on this commission would be ready to move forward had they not consulted with various investors and other bankers and their professional expertise out there. I'm ready to go with their recommendation today.
A whole lot more brain power on that, on this level of stuff sitting out there than there is. Nothing personal against any of us, but...
We recognize what you do.
I know where I am in the world.
Well, you know, there's going to be some people out there that say, "This is big-city thinking, big-city economics. We're inviting outsiders to come in and take our money." That's what they're going to say. But what we're doing is creating an opportunity for our own citizens. We're creating a bigger tax base. We can lower our tax rates so that you don't get taxed to death. We're just creating an opportunity. That's all we're doing here, and I think it's a good move.
Okay. Before I call for the vote, is there any further input from the commission? Okay, is there any public input?
Happy.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Valenzuela, commission members. I'm Tommy Hebert. I serve on the Baptist Memorial's Board of Directors, Baptist Retirement Community. I don't know if y'all saw in the paper, several weeks ago, we have committed to spend 22 million in the north end of San Angelo. If I noticed correctly on some of Mr. Rutherford's slides, Main Street, I think, was the third, a third-led...
That's correct.
That was within the... I am extremely excited about this, just simply from the standpoint of, we have spent the past three or four years as a board, looking into this in terms of what we're going to do on our campus. We are going to expand our campus to include and make it a full continuing continuum of care for retirement communities, for me, for my generation, the boomer generation. So I am extremely excited about this. I would love to have a conversation with Mr. Rutherford as to how we can partner with what he's going to do with you all, Mr. Valenzuela. We hope to be meeting with you soon. So I am extremely excited about this and hopeful that you all will grant your approval for this.
Okay, thank you. Further public input on this before I call for the vote? Okay, call for the vote.
Clarification.
Sure.
We are voting to negotiate. We are not signing a check today.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Mr. Morrison, we are taking action regarding the qualifications and proposed scope of services. Okay? We are giving the city manager authority to execute a letter of intent with Catalyst Urban Development, and we are authorizing the city manager or his designee to begin negotiations with Catalyst Urban Development. Okay? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Let's call for a break. Well, let me first adjourn. Let me first, I'll ask you to adjourn your meeting. Let me adjourn this part of our meeting, and then move us to a break.
Do you want them to also take the vote today?
Oh, yeah, that's why you're here, is to make, to make me, help me do my job.
They're just on their recommendations, their recommendations.
Okay, so not so important that they have to take the vote today, because it's seen as they already took that vote, or it wouldn't have come forward?
Correct.
Correct?
It wouldn't hurt just to make sure we have all of the pieces laid out, so your action is also confirming and accepting their recommendations as well.
Okay, now, they made the recommendation as part of their presentation, though, Ms. Bowling, so I'm...
Perhaps you could just state that you accept their recommendation, and in doing so, you then...
Okay. For the record, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Edwards in commission, we accept your recommendation, have taken a vote to approve what you've asked for, and at this point, would ask you to adjourn your meeting so we could move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, for the Downtown Development Commission, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion?
Motion's made.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
I just, for viewing public who may not have caught the focus, I missed it. The commission that we're working with, the council's working with today, are members appointed by this council and selected by this council to work on the Downtown Development Corporation, and it's with great pride that I feel that we selected this particular board, and it was very, very picky, because we selected each of you because of your expertises to guide us, and I thank you.
Super. Okay, let me call this joint meeting to adjournment and ask that we take a break at this time, and we'll gather back up in 15 minutes. Let me call the meeting to order. Start us with item number six from the consent agenda. This item was pulled and placed on the regular agenda. It's the consideration of adopting a resolution approving an assignment of the December 4th, 2012 lease of the West Mezzanine in substantially the attached form in the City Hall Building for office space, binding between the City of San Angelo and the San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition. The item was pulled by Mr. Morrison, so Mr. Morrison?
I don't expect any presentation on this. We beat this horse to death. It's been voted on, and I know it. But I feel that the public, I feel that the taxpayers are getting the short end of the stick. I do not think this is a good contract, and I simply wanted to vote against it one more time to express my disapproval, so I call for the vote.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Right before we call for the vote, I have a motion to approve...
I'll second item number six, which is the resolution approving an assignment to SEPAK for the West Mezzanine at the City of San Angelo.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number 11. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing ordinances, amending the code related to the animal control and fees, and we have a presentation today by our Health Services Director, Sandra Vierell. I knew the name, I just wanted to get the title right, so...
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Valenzuela. This has actually been kind of long and coming, but we finally are here to present, and I'll just go ahead and go through the amendments that we are proposing today. This is what actually we're trying to do. We're repealing 3.500 entitled impoundment of animals and replace with just one that's called impoundment, but still the same article number. We are repealing section 3.412, adoption of animals, and replacing with same section number, adoption of animals, sterilization requirements with section 3.413, adoption of animals by individuals, section 3.414, adoption of animals by qualified animal rescue organizations, and section 3.415, adoption fees. As well as amending article 1.000, which are the fees, animal control services fees by adding, and we've just divided them out, A, B, C, and D, for individuals, the qualified rescues, previously sterilized animals and non-microchipped, and previously sterilized and microchipped. So we're just actually just putting that concrete into in the amendments.
Okay, so the fees themselves are remaining the same?
The fees are remaining the same. They did not change. We just broke them down.
The language has just been clarified. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then we added the microchip fee. We did not have it in the ordinances, so we're just adding that one section, 1.3001, for the chips. Article 3.500, the impoundment, proposed amendments, section 3.501, the general provisions allow for the impoundment of the animal, first and foremost, allows for the redemption of such animal or allows voluntary relinquishment by the owners, in addition to authorizing any animal running at large to be impounded, first and foremost, and making it unlawful for a dog, a cat, or a pot-bellied pig to be running loose when they are off their property. Section 3.502, the impoundment period is set for three business days for an animal that does not have a microchip or a tag, or seven business days if that animal has a chip or a tag. And this one actually is in response to some criticism by several people, because we were taking a little bit too long in the current ordinance in trying to locate the owner. So it was taking months versus, we're trying to go ahead and just wrap this up as quickly as we can. Section 3.503, redemption of impounded owner-identifiable animals must provide proof of ownership, current registration, have current rabies, and proof of alteration with sterilization. Exceptions to the alteration to the sterilization spay neuters pay the unaltered fee, and that is still currently still 200, so we're not changing that. Obtain the waiver from the health director. We still do that. If we get a letter from the veterinarian for whatever health reasons that they have that they cannot sterilize the animal, and this is an addition, consideration may be given if the animal is registered in a national kennel association, and that would only be invoked twice per owner. And that is something that the board, our ASAC members, came up with. That's just an addition. Section 3.505 states that an animal is eligible for adoption after the prescribed three-to-seven day stray hold, and section 3.506 allows for the immediate release of the animal if it is owner relinquished, so as soon as they sign him over, the animal becomes adoptable. And those are the impoundment proposed amendments for that. Can I just go on to the...
I think so. I think we may take these all at once. If someone goes back and asks that we vote on them separately, we will.
Okay, all right. Adoption proposed amendments, section 3.412 states that no animal shall be eligible for adoption unless it is altered, and that is, you know, we're not taking that away, so we're leaving that on. Section 3.413, adoption of animals by individuals, allows for an individual to adopt by submitting the payment of adoption fees. The ordinance amendment allows for an individual to request a different veterinarian to perform the sterilization, upon which a doctor is responsible for those additional fees to the vet. Section 3.414, we've added the adoption for qualified rescue organizations, again establishing a qualified rescue organization to be a 501(c)(3), allowing a... a qualified rescue organization to be a 501(c)(3), allowing a rescue organization to request a different veterinarian, and makes the adopter responsible for the additional surgery charges. This section requires the rescue organization to microchip an animal prior to their release, so if they take it without us release, without us microchipping before they adopt it out, they also have to microchip the animal, or allow us to do it either way. Section 3.415, adoption fees, again, we did not change them. We just added the sections for individuals staying the same, 50 for cats and 85 for dogs, the same for the qualified rescue organizations. A previously sterilized and microchipped animal is $15, and that just includes the rabies and city tag. And previously sterilized, non-microchipped animal, we'll add that $13 microchip fee to that.
Okay.
Section 3.415 allows a qualified rescue organization to negotiate their own pricing with a vet of choice and allows direct payment for any cost incurred, and that was something that we needed to add. We were allowing that, we just put it down on paper. The section also states that if a contracted fee for sterilization surgery changes, so vet changes their fees, it will result in an automatic increase or decrease to our adoption fees. So, that way, we just, we just have to cover the cost of the surgery.
Okay.
And the adoption fees proposed changes, again, we, it's just stating it what was in the ordinance, section 1.300, the individuals, qualified rescues, sterilized, non-microchipped, and the sterilized, non-microchipped, so it's the same fees, and then we just added the microchip fee again, which is $13.
Okay. I'm looking for a questions or a motion on these. Okay, Mr. Morrison?
Tell me, Sandra, how our adoptions have gone. It's been a year about since we jacked these prices way up there. Have our adoptions gone up? Have they gone down?
They have essentially stayed the same. Actually, I looked at those yesterday. In the 10-month span from January to November, we have adopted 1,255, so that's essentially about the same.
How many were euthanized in that time?
That's, that's a lot. Euthanized 7,294.
How many?
7,294 in a 11-month span.
Can you give me that same figure for the year prior to jacking these prices up to a double amount?
I do not have those figures, but I believe they are probably relatively the same. But I can get those to you. I will get those to you.
I've still got a problem with the way we jack those prices up, because if you get things so high, that's why we are euthanizing 7,300 animals per year.
Well, there's 10, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
To my bay of thinking, if you cut that adoption fee from 50 to 85, maybe to 30 and 50, and if we could save some animals' lives and not have to euthanize many, looks to me like as a community, we would be ahead.
If we do that, then therefore council will have to subsidize the cost of that surgery because we're not making any money. The $65 for the surgery that we charge goes directly to the vet.
And making, making money is a wonderful thing, but when 7,300 animals are unnecessarily euthanized...
We're not making any money.
You know, that's, that's, that's a different argument.
We make zero, so what she's saying is council will have to allocate more money to their department in the budget process.
They, make sure I let you finish? Okay. The number of the prior year, this was 10 months' worth of data?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the number of the prior year was a little over 9,000 animals. This is 7,200, so I would, I would also agree with you that it's gonna be roughly the same after a year's time, so I would, I would say that it looks like the changes didn't have any impact. But other questions on her, on her presentation?
Just a comment. I did not know until after the fact, but I never get a good comment on the animal, animal department, as Rick knows, who I usually call him with all of them. But I did get a really favorable comment, a person, a family member. I did not know they were looking for an animal, and they could have gone to a pet store. They chose to go to the animal shelter. Very pleasant experience for them. They bought and went through all the steps of the holding and the pet being fixed and picking up their pet, and it was, for them, a young couple. It was like picking up out a baby in the, in the store shop window, but they were very complimentary of the staff, and nobody out there knows them.
And we have a lot of beautiful animals, and, you know, we just need people to be aware that we do have, and we have a lot of purebred ones as well that, that show up, and, you know, they just need to really go out there, and they could really find a really nice animal.
I, I want to concur with what she said. I mean, we, we've only adopted two in the past year from the shelter, and, and I can't adopt anymore. I'm not gonna let anymore in my house, but...
I say that, too. I've got six cats.
But anyway, I, I know my kids will, "But Dad..." Okay, so anyway, that is, it was a good experience. It really was, and that is a compliment to staff out there and...
Changes.
And, yeah, and what's going on, and how y'all manage and operate and run the facility out there, and, and I know none of us like euthanasia. We don't want to do that, but it goes back to kind of this whole thing. It's about us being responsible, us being, you know, responsible for the assets that we have, and one of those assets is animals, and don't, but, you know, as many laws as we want to put, as all these other things, it's not gonna change things, but, long story. With that, I'll motion to approve item...
Second.
Eleven?
Let me make sure that I, 11, A, B, and C.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sandra, question?
I'm sorry?
You know, speaking of euthanize...
Euthanasia.
Putting them down. You know, one of the first trips out there to the shelter was, I got to witness one of those, that, that wasn't the most pleasant...
No, it's not.
...thing I've ever seen, but how are we, I assume our incinerator's still at order, and we're, and the public or tractors is picking up the, the animals?
That's correct. We no longer using the incinerator. That's correct. It was going to be very costly to fix or to buy a new one, so...
And one of the great things about that is that Sandra's been able to save in Julie on a lot of gas expenses. So, for instance, at the end of the year last year, Sandra was able to do some improvements out at the shelter, things where you've got rusting cabinets that are falling apart. They were able to replace those with stainless steel, so they're able to utilize some of those cost savings to actually do some things that they didn't have money to do out there.
Yeah, we had like a $30,000 natural gas savings, so we were able to do a little bit, you know, of the maintenance things that, that really needed to be addressed, so...
And it does take a tremendous person to put down an animal.
It does.
Julie, I tell you what, man, you are awesome. I mean, I hate that it has to be done, but I saw you in action, and going, that has got to be one of the toughest things to do, so thank you for what you do, so...
Okay, Mr. Alexander, and then Mr. Morrison.
However you want to do it. All right.
Well, Mr. Morrison had already had one, one bite at the apple, so I was acknowledging you first and then back to him.
Okay. Well, I just think we're, we're missing, for me, we're missing some changes. We're missing something, and I, I've been wanting to discuss it and get it to the council. It's one of the best ideas I've seen, because it didn't come from me, it came from other people, but it was well-accepted on the Facebook page, and I tell you, people online, they get after you when they don't like something, and this was acceptance. That's pretty good, is that, and I want to see a city tag program that is microchip-based. If you want to do it with a regular tag, that's fine, because I don't think we, I think Rick said by law, we can't force people to microchip their animal necessarily for a city tag purpose, but I want to see this because they don't lose their tag. I, I got these, the miniature collies, and their head's so small, a collar's not staying on that dog. It has so much fur, no, you gotta choke the dog before the collar's gonna stay on. So, there's not gonna be a collar on that dog. It'll come off easy, so that's not gonna happen with that dog. So, it's an Australian sheep herder or whatever, so, my wife's gonna kill me for not knowing the name, Sheltie. Thank you, Steph. Anyway, they, they have a microchip, and I would like that microchip to be the method by which it's tagged with a city tag. The other thing is, we have to run all the way out to the shelter to get the city tag because most, I think most vets don't support the program, and why is their own reason, but there's a reason.
Actually, I probably more than have to sell them. Last year, as a matter of fact, the participating vets sold about 8,400 tags.
Okay.
So, that was good.
And that's what I want to get to, is questions about how many, but there's still a lot not offering, so somebody that's not offering is, it's just an extra burden to go all the way out, and, and so people don't, they hardly get their pets to the vet in the first place to get the rabies shot, much less go to the animal shelter every year to get the tags. The microchip is an online, hey, this is my microchip number, I want to pay for my dog, this year I want to pay for my dog for its lifetime, different choices, and then the, the next component here is that if my dog is found, that the truck is carrying a reader, they read, see the number, send it into you guys, you say, yep, that's a registered dog, and it has, there's a service attached. The dog gets returned back to my house as a service because I'm paying for that service, maybe a $25 service per year, but I'm paying for it. If the dog never makes it to the shelter, then that's a dog that's not removed from its little pen and put to sleep.
Mr. Alexander?
That saves dogs. So, this, this is a...
You're doing good stuff, except I think you're gonna have to do that in the form of future...
Well, I've mentioned it, and it doesn't seem to be picking up, and here we brought a major change to the ordinance without that being discussed. These are... It's a pretty good idea. It saves dogs, and people like the idea, getting the dog returned to them. Let's get this in front of us for discussion and go into these details, and talk about how many dogs are city tagged versus how many dogs there are in the city, and cats, too, and, and we can make money from this...
Okay.
...and provide a service.
We, we have a marker so that we can, I mean, you know, at the end of the meeting, we'll go through future agenda items.
One question.
Mr. Morrison?
We just approved on the consent agenda, second reading, a zone change so that there could be a private crematorium for animals out on North Bryant. Can the city partner with this private to use their crematorium? Just, just a question. Since ours doesn't work, and I...
You, you could. The issue you would get into is, one, you would have to pay them, which it's not gonna be cheap. Secondly, you're gonna have to transport all of those animals over there, and so while no one likes the, the concept of that we, that we're not using it, a bulk of cities do it this way, and most of them do it that way because it is, it is so much cheaper, and it is a method to bury the animal versus incinerating.
May I ask, Julie, when this crematorium is in operation, would you check with them to see if there might be some type of a partnership we could form? Some people have a problem with...
We're still...
...taking an animal to the dub, but...
I mean, we're all, these are all kind of related, but they're not what we're talking about, so, again, that's a, that's a...
But the crematorium was on the agenda.
But it's a fine idea, a fine idea at least can be pursued. Let's just ask them to do it when we, when we're supposed to. I've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments related to this? Okay, any public comment on this item? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Super. Let's move on to item number 12. This is public comments for and against annexation, and a presentation by our planning manager, A.J. Favre.
I'll keep it very brief. This is just to remind the public of the piece of property that we're speaking of today and taking public comment in regards to a petition for annexation, which you as a council accepted at the last regular council meeting. I'm starting with an aerial photograph here in the far southwest...
May I interrupt her just a second? Nathan, if you're listening, my computer will not open the different things, so if you're listening, Nathan, I need some computer assistance, and I'm sorry, A.J.
That's okay. It happens. This area is in far southwest San Angelo, as you may recall. We've done some additional maps from your comments from the last presentation to help better display this area to you. You can see a red cross-hatched tract of property here, and that is the 20-acre tract of property that is currently vacant. As you recall, we talked about the adjacent piece of property. It's a triangular-shaped property that is currently undergoing construction for an apartment complex. This is coincidentally owned by the same owner. Again, here is the map that we saw last time that they submitted to us. It better illustrates that adjacent property, and this is the survey illustrating that property to be exactly 20 acres in size. You might also remember at your last meeting, you also approved a proposed calendar for the sequence of events that's required by the Texas Local Government Code in this annexation. I have that displayed on the slide here. Today, council's the first public hearing of two that are required, so you'll see this again at your January meeting, and then we'll begin with the introduction of an annexation ordinance. So, today, we're asking for no action from the council. We're simply doing our due diligence and allowing the public the opportunity to comment on the annexation of this property if they so desire.
Okay. As, as it asks, is there a public comment on this annexation proposal for or against this proposal? Okay, then the access has been made available, Ms. Favre, and so I'll ask that we close that item and move on to item number 13. This is discussion, consideration of, and possible action on a petition, petition filed by area landowners seeking annexation. Presentation by our planning manager, A.J. Favre.
Thank you. This mirrors very closely the last discussion that we had, and that we're following the same process, but this is a second piece of property for which the city has been approached with a petition for annexation into the city of San Angelo. This property is shown on the slide here in an aerial format. You'll notice that the piece of property is again shown in a red cross-hatched pattern. You'll also notice that it's actually very near the last property that we talked about in this general area.
Does it envelop space that wouldn't be annexed? Always, those red lines confuse me sometimes, okay?
I'm sorry.
So, walk me through...
Let's go through this next piece. This helps, I think.
Can you see how that little...
Yes.
I need help on what that is and what it means, okay?
Okay, gotcha. So, back to the aerial just for a moment. It does leave a particular piece of property here that I'm illustrating with my cursor that would still be outside the city limits that is owned by a separate property owner. Now, when we look at annexations for the city, one of the requirements is that it be contiguous to the existing city limit. There's no prohibition on creating these donut holes essentially.
Okay.
It is a possibility, but again, in the notification process of this annexation, the property owner of this property neighboring it may decide that they would also like to petition the city for annexation. They have the choice to do that or to not do that. It's not relevant.
Have we approached them?
We have not approached them directly for that. That is something that you can give us permission to do, but we will not do without council authority.
Okay, the owners are Community Hills Christian Church on Knickerbocker Road next to Burger King. They join churches with another church, Lakeview Christian, and that was Lakeview's property, and they're in the process of selling that land. I don't know why we wouldn't go, it's right across from Bonham. I mean, it's literally, you go, I mean, so it's gonna be city property. It's gonna be developed out fairly soon. Why not go through the process now? And if we say yes, then I need to exit.
Well, that is, that is something you can ask for under future agenda items. You as the council can also initiate annexation proceedings, but we do have to have your director to do that separately. It's, it's not part of this, this agenda item.
Well, I can't, I think I have to exit the discussion, don't I? If my church owns the property, and I'm a member of the church that can vote, do I exit the discussion?
But again, the piece of property that we're here to discuss today is not owned by the church.
Right, it is not, but we're making a donut hole, and we're obviously leaving out a piece of property that's gonna be developed very soon.
You're not doing anything today. All you're doing today is deciding if you want to accept the petition. It doesn't compel you in any way to actually annex the property. It simply gives you the opportunity for staff to research the area and to take public comment on it, so you're not actually doing anything today.
I can't, I can't see, I can't see how you're conflicted myself.
And they're saying I'm not, so I would recommend that you approach the property owner and ask if they want to be a part of it. I, I would recommend that.
Okay, well, again, you'll, you'll need to...
Has to be a separate item.
Yes.
Has to be separate. Can't be, okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, in other words, well, no, let me answer it this way. You'd have to turn down this petition and say, I'm gonna turn this down because I'd rather wait and see if they're gonna work together, or something like that. I mean, that's the only way that...
Your second option is that you, as a city council, tell staff, we would like you to initiate the annexation of this piece.
Okay.
In addition to the process you're already about to start today. So, it, it's actually two completely different pieces. This piece, the owner has approached us...
Okay, or a third option is just to go ahead and create the donut hole. I mean, accept the petition, move forward, and then let that move forward on its own move forward and then let that move forward on its own pace as a different item.
And then that property owner has the choice to come forward or you as a council.
But your item number two has to be on a separate agenda item.
Correct.
At future agenda item.
It's not covered by what we're here to discuss today.
Got it.
And then if you believe there are some facts which would, um, implicate a conflict on your part, could you go ahead and provide those to me in advance?
I'm a voting member of Community Hills Christian Churches, which I think is in the process of sell, of selling that property.
Right, it would be extremely helpful and I, I'm hearing what, if you could just perhaps just write, email me or shoot me-
Okay.
Some detail so I could crystallize them and look at them, thanks.
Okay.
Motion to approve the petition filed by the landowners to annex the property?
As well as, I hate to jump in-
As well as-
But we also have a schedule that we will also need you to adopt, which is your-
As well as the proposed schedule.
Second. Okay, thank you, got beat, Ms. Farmer, by Mr. Silves. I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfeld, a second by Mr. Silves, to accept this petition and the proposed schedule. Uh, is there any public input on this item? Is there further question from council? Call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move us to item number 14. This is the discussion of the city website costs. Making sure I didn't miss anything. Yes, the discussion of the city website costs and consideration of authorizing staff to negotiate a subscription services agreement. A presentation by our public information officer, Anthony Wilson.
Good day, lady and gentleman. My purpose here today is twofold. One is, first of all, I want to update the city council on the cost of the redesign of the website, which you previously authorized, and to reassure you that that cost is actually well below the $40,000 that you, you previously authorized for that particular project. And then second of all, I'm gonna be seeking some authorization from you to negotiate a contract for hosting the website and possibly some other, uh, subscription services. And in doing so, we're going to outline the different options for those services and, and how we would, uh, propose paying for those, which would be outside the general fund. So, first, just a little bit of history. Uh, you may recall, on May the 1st, you authorized a contract not to exceed $40,000 for a vendor named Vision Internet to redesign our website. Now, I began as your public information officer on September the 1st and at that point, uh, immediately began working with Vision, with our IT manager and with our, uh, legal department on, uh, drafting and executing a contract. And we negotiated a price of $30,860, which you can see is well below the $40,000 that you authorized for the project. Now, Vision additionally offers three optional services in, in addition to the redesign. And I spoke with five of Vision's prior clients, including three from Texas. Those were the cities of Round Rock, Denton, and Grand Prairie, which, by the way, all of their websites, after they were redesigned by Vision won statewide awards. But I asked them about these, uh, optional services to just get some feeling on which would be beneficial for us potentially, uh, to, to take advantage of. They offer an onsite consulting, we're gonna do this remotely, we think we can talk with them via phone or teleconferencing or whatever to, to determine what exactly we want in and from our website. They offer a service for content migration. We're going to do that in-house because we feel like it's a good way to train our site administrators within the city who use our website, train them on the new website by moving the content from our current website to the new website. Now, the one service that unanimously all of the other, uh, cities that I talked to said was valuable and they thought it was critical, was the onsite training, where they actually send someone here for a day, they work with us and with the other, uh, managers within the city who are going to be, uh, updating and, and posting information to our website so that we can learn how to do that. Uh, like I said, that was the consensus, everyone said, yeah, this is a, this is a, a must-do. So when you add together the, uh, cost of the onsite training, which is nearly $3,300, plus the cost of the redesign, which is nearly, uh, $31,000, you end up with a total of $34,150. And as a reminder, you authorized $40,000 for the redesign of the website. So, as you can see, this falls, you know, uh, well above 10% of a cost savings from what you authorized. Now, that brings us to the second portion of, uh, my presentation. And that is, once we have the site redesigned, we gotta figure out the best way to host the site. Uh, currently, here's what we're doing, we pay a vendor named Avnet $24, uh, $2,450 a year and that gives us 1 gig of disk space. The problem is that we're using 7 gig of disk space. And when we, uh, talked with the vendor recently, they told us that they were planning on soon, they didn't give us a definite timetable, that, but soon they are going to begin charging $1,000 per year for every 4 gig of space that you're over what the original agreement called for. So, if they were to begin doing that, that would raise our cost for hosting the site from $2,450 to $4,450. And again, if you added the, the cost of the redesign that I just outlined, uh, that would yield you a total first-year cost of nearly $39,000. Now, the IT manager, Johnny, and I also explored the possibility that the city could host the site itself. What we found is that would require an initial capital investment of more than $10,000 in servers and software. And we would also have to purchase increased bandwidth in order to accommodate the traffic that the website would generate at a cost of $400 per month. So you're looking at $4,800 a year, uh, after that capital investment. And you can see what the total first-year cost of that would be, it would be, you know, uh, pushing $50,000. The other option for hosting the site is Vision, which is going to do our redesign of the website, offers, uh, a hosting service at a cost of $200 per month for 100 gig of space. So we would never have to worry about space, that would always accommodate all the space needs that we would have. Uh, and their contract calls for a 3% annual rate increase. Uh, initially, it was 5%, we've got it down to 3%. And frankly, I'm hoping to, to knock it down a little bit further, uh, than that if you authorize us to negotiate the contract. Uh, but you can see what the total first-year cost of that $2,400 a year for the hosting, uh, plus the redesign would be, that would be $36,550. Now, all of those three, uh, options I just outlined, you would provide us the current level of service that we currently have as far as hosting goes. Uh, Vision also offers a package, two different packages of subscription services in addition to the hosting. And here's what, here's what they offer. Uh, in addition to the hosting, they offer a package that includes 24/7 tech support. They monitor your website round the clock and if it's ever offline for more than 10 minutes, they jump in and help you out. Uh, plus any upgrades, uh, that, uh, occur. And of course, anyone who has an iPhone knows how often upgrades, uh, happen, you know, once every couple of months or so. Uh, and that would be at a cost of $400 per month, uh, or $4,800 per year. And you can see what the total first-year cost of just the website would be with the redesign if we went, uh, with that option.
Okay, what's an upgrade? Uh, and I just wanna know, because are we talking that this, is the site always evolving? And they're making changes to their modules and saying, hey, if San Angelo wants this module, it's an update and it's part of that fee, if you, if you're not, you don't have this fee, then you gotta pay for it.
I'm getting there.
Okay, good.
I'm getting there. So, the upgrades are mainly software upgrades. But, this next package does what you're, what you're suggesting in that, in addition to the hosting, the 24/7 tech support and the software upgrades, any new features that they offer, you have access to those and they, they add those new features to your sites. And then after four years, they do a graphic redesign of your site, which is simply just a freshening of the look, uh, of the site. It's, it's not, it's not a massive redesign like we're, like we're contracting to do.
So, we're paying four years, that's, uh, $24,000 and we get that redesign included with all the technical, technical support and upgrades, everything? That, that's $6,000 a year and they include the graphic upgrade?
Right, not forgetting the 3% annual increase is the only slight play on what you said, but anyway. So don't forget that in year 24.
So that 3% annual would be for as long as we, we use them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And again, I'm, I'm hoping to, we've talked it down from 5 to 3, I'm hoping to get it down a little further than that. Uh, and, uh, you know, frankly, one of the, the tactics that, uh, we're going to propose is that we'll sign maybe a longer-term agreement if, uh, if you will eliminate the, uh, the annual rate increase. So there may be some cost savings there. Anyway, those are the, uh, the two different packages of, uh, subscription services, uh, that they offer. Um, I do wanna note that, uh, when I spoke to the public information officer in Denton, uh, he noted that the first three years of their, uh, contract with Vision, they went simply with the hosting. And they recently purchased this high-end package, if you will, because their users and their site administrators within the organization became frustrated because they were always chasing the technology. I mean, everyone knows how fast technology changes and, uh, they always felt like they were behind the eight ball, that they couldn't offer the, the latest in technology with their website. And it was a particular frustration, uh, with their users. Now, that raises the question, how would we pay for these hosting and, uh, subscription services? Currently, that $2,400, uh, $2,400, $2,450 that we're currently paying for hosting comes out of the general fund. Uh, here's what we're proposing. If you'll hearken back to fiscal year 2011, there was a bond fund 505 that had one remaining active project in it and that was a new city website. Uh, the city manager closed that fund during the summer of 2011 and used the $90,000 that was remaining in that fund to pay for voice-over internet protocol phone expenses, thereby freeing up the same amount of money, $90,000, in the communications fund to address the new city website. So that's where we're paying the $34,000 for the redesign of the website. It's out of that fund balance of the communication fund. Um, that leaves, uh, nearly $56,000 that was previously earmarked for the website to address some of these other expenses. So, uh, what, uh, we would propose doing is paying for the hosting cost plus any subscription services that you may decide here today to opt for from those earmarked website funds that are in the communication fund, fund balance. And in doing so, again, that's going to be a cost savings to the general fund of, uh, a minimum of $2,400 per year, because that's the lowest-cost package for the hosting. The funding in that, uh, general fund, fund balance is sufficient to, uh, sustain services until the next redesign. And something, this is just sort of looking ahead, something that we may wanna consider during the fiscal year 13 budget process, is potentially charging our website, uh, website users or departments a small fee in order to help replenish that funding so that we'll have earmarked funds for the next big redesign of the website and to continually pay for these hosting and/or subscription services. So, essentially what we'd propose doing is each year, we would move money from the fund balance into the public information accounts in order to pay for these, uh, hosting and subscription costs. Obviously, that, uh, you know, what package that we go with is a, a council, uh, decision. We could spend no more than what we currently are, uh, for hosting without any, uh, tech support or upgrades. What we're recommending is that we subscribe with, uh, Vision Internet for the hosting, uh, 24/7 tech support, the upgrades, the new features and the graphic redesign at that cost of $6,000 a year with a 3% annual rate increase. Uh, if the council is not comfortable with that, in the alternative, we would recommend, uh, subscribing for the hosting, the 24/7 tech support, which does lighten some of the burden on our IT staff and the upgrades at a cost of, uh, $4,800, uh, per year. And so, with that, I will, uh, try to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Um, I, I guess this is kinda diving down into the content of what the website will be generating. One of my, um, I, I know there's the pretty, the fancy, I mean, all that kinda stuff and there's the social media and all that. My facet, what I'm really more interested in is the, uh, and I mentioned this before, is the back office, is how this is gonna tie in with, uh, water utility billing, with, uh, permits and inspection, with code enforcement, with, you know, all that kinda stuff where, uh, that's my intrigue. What I'm really key on, that to me is where this will make, you know, make money for the city if, if there's such a, such a word. I mean, and not necessarily gender, uh, making money, but it, it will be a customer service feature that will actually enhance beyond just pretty graphics and such, so.
I have this website at the ready just for you, Mr. Hirschfeld. This is the, uh, Grand Prairie website. And you can all see it down here on this, on the screen below you, but whoops, let me go back up.
And they did this, this is their-
This is a Vision customer right here.
Because you, you mentioned Round Rock, I didn't like Round Rocks at all, unless I'm looking for them.
Uh, I, I think Round Rocks is definitely better than ours.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's as good as, as this one, but here's, here's some of the, the features that I like about this website. I love this button up here at the top that says, "I want to." I want to adopt a pet. I want to apply for, and you can see the different sort of permits, services that you can apply for. Let's see, that one says, "I want to file a code violation complaint." Think that would be helpful?
So, so this will, the, the, and, and that's exactly what I was hoping to see.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, but tell me that that right there and I, that will do an interface with, uh, in that, or that will tie back, or that will power, or that will do something to, to improve that customer service aspect and actually be able to look at a water bill, maybe?
Absolutely, you know, one of the things that is a strength of Vision is that they have, uh, an, uh, interactive program that seamlessly melds those third-party vendors, like our water billing website, with the host website. Um, I mean, in my opinion, uh, you know, and I pay my water bill online, I don't know that it's as seamless as I would like it to be. I think a better example of how we do that well right now and that Vision will help us with those third-party vendors is our tickets.com website. Because when you go online, uh, on, uh, our civic events link, uh, on the city's website to buy a ticket, you know, you click on that and it looks like it's the city's website, it is not. It is a third-party vendor website. And so, the, the way that Vision connects with those third-party vendor websites is really seamless and I think it's going to improve, um, not only what we can do, but how we do it.
And this is included in the price of what you're talking about?
Yes, sir, this is included in the $34,150.
I'm happy then.
Yeah, it opens a ticket, when you file a complaint, it opens a ticket, you can track the ticket. It has a mobile phone, mobile interface, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, mobile phones are half of all internet now and so, you know, it's gonna be a lot of mobile, um, interactions here. I guess you go to their site, I didn't use my phone to do it, I should put an M in front of it, I'll try that. And it automatically pops up that way.
Well, and, and-
I don't know.
And as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Alexander, about the new features, you know, uh, at some point, we'd like to have a mobile app, an iPad, pad app, uh, as part of this. And those are the sort of features that we would be able to get under the package that we're recommending for the subscription services.
And that's included? Included or add-on?
That's part of the $600 per month, uh, subscription services package. If they offer those new features in the future, we've got them.
$500 per month, $6,000 a year?
$600 per month.
Oh, $600, oh, okay. Was $5,000 a, $6,000 a year, right?
You're confused.
I'm confused, okay.
He's correct.
As always.
It's fine, it's all right.
All right.
I'm confused, not that you're always correct.
500, 6,000.
Okay, yes.
That's where you're getting your 6.
Yes.
Okay, uh, you, folks, let me ask you to please be careful, you're walking on each other by not, not letting me help, uh, direct traffic here, okay? Mr. Silves was next.
Anthony, I'm, I've got a couple of questions, how many pages do we currently have in our, on our site?
Oh, good lord, I, I have no idea, Mr. Silves, I mean, uh, and, and I mean frankly, part of our frustration with the website is that, in my opinion, there aren't enough parameters for the site administrators. And that's one of the things that I wanna work on with Vision. You know, when you scroll through our website, the look alone is just wildly different from page to page. And it's one of the things that we're going to gain control of with Vision's help is every page is gonna look the same, it's gonna be a consistent look throughout, it's gonna be a consistent structure throughout, so that every department, every division's just not off doing their own thing, uh, with the website.
So do you think we have more than 50 pages or less than?
Yes, sir, very, very easily more than 50.
More than 200?
I would say that we would have more than 200, because you, you look at, um, uh, for instance, the public information page, we have a half dozen or more different sort of sublinks, if you will, off of the public information page. And that's not unusual, uh, particularly for a department that maybe is as complex as community development. You know, they've got a lot of different divisions underneath there. Each of those divisions may offer different services, all of which have their own page. So, uh, you're talking into the, uh, the hundreds, uh, as far as the number of pages on our website.
So as far as our, our ability to migrate to the new, if we go with it, is there going to be, is it going to slow things down, are we-
Are we going to run into problems on the migration part of it, or?
Well, I think what we're-
How fast does it happen?
I think what we're going to do, though, is we're going to insist that all of those site administrators work on migrating their content, so it's not going to be just up to the public information officer or the multimedia coordinator. Each site administrator within each department and division is going to be responsible for that with our oversight and our assistance. But again, you know, when I talked to those other cities, they thought that that represented a good training exercise for those site administrators because it got them, it gave them a chance to practice, if you will, manipulating the website before it went live.
Was the $30,000 the lowest bid we got? I mean, from anybody out there, or?
Well, and of course, you'll have to excuse me because I was not the public information officer back in, in May and during the RFP process for this, but my understanding is, is that there were vendors that were much higher. I mean, you're talking about $70,000 or more, and we didn't go with the least expensive vendor. We didn't go with the most expensive vendor, and, you know, I'm, I feel we are fortunate in order to be able to do the project, contract for the project at a price that, in my opinion, is much less than what this council authorized us to do.
And the last thing, and I'll be browsing while somebody asks a question, but you mentioned Round Rock and Grand Prairie, and who else?
Denton.
Denton? Just those three?
Those are, those are three cities in Texas. I checked with two others that were out of state, but those were the three in Texas that I, that I checked with.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
I have several questions, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
You say that we closed the communication fund out in June of 2011.
No, sir. That was bond fund 505. That money, by doing so, we freed up money in the communication fund for the new city website, which was the last project that was remaining in bond, bond fund 505.
So we did not clean the fund out. There is money in the fund to, to support this.
In the communication fund? Yes, sir. There are, there are $90,000 earmarked in the communication fund fund balance for the new city website.
So we're not going to have to pull out of the general fund and put it into the communication fund? There is money there.
Vice versa. We're going to be pulling from the communication fund into the general fund in order to pay for this project and for the hosting and subscription services.
Next question. We authorized $40,000 in May, and you say you have spent 36 and change?
We haven't spent anything yet.
But we have a, an expenditure offered to us of 36 and change, so there's a little bit of a savings.
30,860 plus the onsite training, which is $34,150 all total.
Okay. Is this 38,950 option one and 40,150 option two in addition to that?
No, sir. That includes that cost.
That is included in that $40,000 that we authorized in May?
Yes, sir.
So if we go with option two, the number one, you're going to have to get approval for $150?
No, sir. You have authorized up to $40,000 for the redesign.
Thank you, sir.
And what I was trying to do was just present the first-year cost of the total project. So what we would, what we would seek to do is spend that $34,150 for the redesign of the website, and then if there are whatever subscription package or hosting services that we contract for, we'd move that money over as well.
Let me try to help a little bit here. It's the, it's the language of the actual item on our agenda that I think crosses the bridge, so it's the discussion of the city website costs, which is the $34,000 and something, which comes out of the 40 that was previously approved. But what you'd also be doing, Mr. Morrison, is approving something along the lines of $6,000, which is how you get to $40,150. So you'd be approving that $6,000 via authorizing staff to negotiate a subscription services agreement. So what you're doing is two things. One, you're kind of finishing up old business, and the other one, you're adding new business for $6,000, and that's where you get to the $40,150 if you approve it.
Okay. Next question.
Thank you.
We've got a man here in town, Joe Hyde, that is developing a website for San Diego, California. Did we talk to Joe Hyde about developing a local man in San Angelo, Texas, to give him the opportunity to bid on developing our website?
Well, as you know, I was not the public information officer.
Yeah, but you can go back in records. Surely, there were some records that were left.
Well, we went through a legal RFP process in which anyone and everyone was able to bid on the project, and I do know Mr. Hyde, and I do know that he's typically got his finger on the pulse of what's going on in our community and with the city. In fact, he had a article on his website about you a couple of weeks ago, so I know that he follows city governance, and to my knowledge, he did not submit a proposal to redesign our website.
I like to stay local. It just, to me, it makes more sense to stay with the local business, and Vision, I think, is out of California, isn't it?
Vision is out of California.
So California company is divining our website, and yet a San Angelo company is designing a website for San Diego. That, something doesn't really fit there. Also, another question to go along with that, have we, have we talked to ASU? And have we talked to Texas Tech? Have we given them an opportunity to weigh in on this? We've got, we've got two of the finest universities in the world, right here in San Angelo and Lubbock, and they're all tied together. Have we talked to them about this design instead of going to California?
Well, I'll go back to my previous answer that, you know, we went through a legal RFP process, and, and as part of that, that process, my understanding is, is that we were looking for someone with experience in developing a municipal website. And, and I'm, I agree with you. I think there's some very bright minds on the ASU campus and at Texas Tech, but whether or not they have the experience doing what we were wanting to do with our website, I don't know, but, but I do know that they did not submit a proposal as a result of the RFP process.
We haven't talked to them, though. We haven't asked them for their input. We've not asked them for guidance. We've not asked for them to, to consult with us. That's my question. We're, we've got a tremendous resource right here in San Angelo that we are totally and completely bypassing because we don't even get on the phone or talk to them and ask them.
Well, Mr. Morrison, this council has already approved a contract with Vision Internet.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further question or comment before I'm?
I've got one last one, and I don't, I wouldn't even come close to assuming that even our IT department could do this. I mean, I guess it would take a lot of man-hours, or?
Johnny is here, if he'd like to speak to this, but I think he is particularly interested in us having a package that includes the 24/7 tech support because it will lighten the already heavy burden on our IT division, and it's one of the reasons why, I mean, along with the finances, from a financial standpoint, it doesn't make sense for us to host the website ourselves, but also that would just be another burden on, on our IT division. And as you know, you know the number of people that there are working there and the scope of our organizations.
Abnet, was it Abnet?
Abnet, yes, sir.
That they're our hosts now?
That's correct.
Okay. Paul? I'm wanting, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Hirschfeld's ready to make a motion. I'm wanting you to pay particular attention because I think this is a little bit in your bailiwick as to which level seems to make sense.
Could you go back to your recommendations?
I have one question. I have to, I have answered this. What's our current expenditure per year to maintain this website?
2,450.
2,450, that's right. And that, okay. So we're increasing expenditures by 35, 50?
Thank you for this consideration of authorizing.
Well, just an overview is you can spend as much money as you want. You can spend very little money. In general, you get what you pay for. Nothing's clear-cut because everybody has a different angle. You invite Angeles State into this. You don't, you, it's hard to contract with a university to get a certain product because they're, they're in a learning phase. You can get assistance usually, but not, not an end product this complicated, and then to maintain it over years when the students are all switching out, your experience, it doesn't work. It's not that, that easy.
Your recommendation?
Recommendation?
Your recommendation?
And I don't want to do the work.
Whatever gets us those 100 gigs.
Hang on, one guy at a time, please.
The 100 gigs.
Yeah, take the 100 gigs. That's, that's, you, you did that, is that part of the recommendation? Take the 100 gigs?
Well, our recommendation is that we subscribe with Vision Internet for the, the top-level subscription packages that they offer. The hosting includes 100 gigs of disk space, but-
The key, the key difference is the new features and graphic redesign in four years.
You want a graphic redesign in four years. You want that.
Okay, that's the key feature. If you want that, then you need to do-
The space alone. You want the space.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I thought really all you're asking for in the redesign is $4,800 plus whatever annual rate increase. That's $4,800 is what it would generate over four years.
Well-
To do a redesign.
No, I'm-
$6,000.
I believe it's the $6,000 to get to the redesign. $4,800.
You're spending $1,200 more to get the redesign in four years.
And the new features. You're, you're exactly right.
And you'll knock it down to 2%.
Sorry.
I'll do my, I'll do my very best.
Well, on the, on the storage, don't let them increase 3% on the storage. Storage is cheaper. I mean, every 18 months, it gets half the price or something like that. It's, it's the wrong direction on that one, and tell them the council just thought that was backwards. And so you got, maybe you rate lower the whole thing by another percent, maybe cover the storage, but-
You guys were beating it to death. Mr. Hirschfeld, your motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation as presented, and so that's the $6,000 version, okay? At this point, I'm looking for any further final comments or questions. I need to go to public input.
I know Mr. Turner has a very different view on how this stuff could work. It's, it's a dynamic, you want to come up and talk about it? It's a dynamic populated website. City of Los Angeles uses it, I believe. You want to talk about it, Mr. Turner?
Okay.
It's public comment. It's, it's his turn.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I bet he takes five minutes, all his five minutes to show us because it's a lot. It's different, I do.
And Monique, if you want to add something to, please.
Listen, I'm calling him up here because you got to hear his point of view.
I'm trying to-
To know it's in my brain here.
I just got to tell you I was going to.
Can we get his public point of view?
Y'all are killing me today. Here we go, Mr. Turner.
Yes, for the record, I'm still Jim Turner. And looking at this package, and I've talked to a number of people, some of which have been at places like ASU, other developers around, and so on. First off, the amount of money here looks expensive, but at the same time, to a large degree, you do get what you pay for. And this price is not out of line with what other developers I've talked to, both, mostly over the internet, would charge for a similar service. So you're, that's not out of line. I do have concerns how this whole process has been developed. Mainly, what was presented in May was not a complete picture of what it was going to cost for the web, including the hosting services and so on, and it was confusing in the agenda packet what you were actually authorizing money to go for. Now, for right now, we probably have a good start for a website, and paying for four years at the $6,000 rate is probably not a bad idea. But this is also when the city of San Angelo needs to take and get involved with ASU and other local people to come up with a long-term web strategy that's just not going out chasing one new proprietary redesign after another. This should be the last time we have to do this type of project. If you take a look at other government entities, whether you're talking to White House, Department of Defense, FEMA, you name it, they're taking a very different approach in using professional developers and professional people to do it, but they're also using non-proprietary, they're using open source, open standards, shareable designs to where if Grand Prairie site had been done on the basis like I'm talking, we would be able to actually port Grand Prairie site to our hosting service, whoever we did it with, with less cost involved, less turbulence involved, and the other thing about it, be able to keep up better. This is a long-term strategic thing. This is not saying that what we have with Vision Internet is necessarily a bad project. We don't want to even think about doing self-hosting. The, what you need for a website design and hosting is much different than what you need for the city's information processing needs. Second thing, if we go with a good hosting service, we also have a built-in redundancy and emergency backup system. For example, if we went with even somebody like Rackspace, completely independent, another one, they have hosting services, San Antonio, California, East Coast, West Coast. Something goes down, something hits the local area, we're still got internet service and we can still use that as a primary communications, emergency communications channel, even if we can't host the website ourselves here. And if you look at the natural disasters that have happened recently, whether you're talking hurricanes, whatever, having that internet connection was critical for the emergency response. So don't even think about trying to host your own website. You'll get yourself in trouble. That part, the staff has done good on. There's a number of things they've done good on. As far as getting to the local vendors, local people that can do the job, I think the city as a whole has a problem doing that with all kinds of contracts. That needs to be looked at in addition to this. We don't do very well at getting our local vendors involved in a lot of this stuff. A lot of local vendors don't even want to deal with the city. It's such a painful process anymore. But that's something for a different meeting, different agenda, needs to be dealt with by a new city manager who's going to take and look at problems like this, I'm sure. But for right now, this is probably as good as you're going to get. I don't think you're going to come in at a better price, and right now, we don't have a good long-term web strategy. A lot of what they put in there is piecemealing. The package they're recommending is going to keep you up to some degree with local technology, but it's not a good long-term internet web strategy. That's where the city needs to get involved with ASU, not to develop the website, but to develop an entire web and internet connection strategy. That they can help us with immensely. Until that time, this is a interim solution, if you will. It's not the one I'd prefer, but it's a workable solution, and the price is in the ballpark of where it should be. It's not outrageous, and we're, I would like to see unlimited hosting, but 100 gig is still a pretty good amount of information there. We'll fill that up in four years, though, I'm sure, just looking at the way we're doing things right now. We have to be careful when we start putting size limitations on some of this, especially when you've got services out there that offer unlimited. There's a lot of different ways we can do things. There's a lot of, but that's why we need to get experts in just technology, not in website design, but in the technology itself, not, and ASU and Texas Tech can do that. We don't have time to do it for this website redesign, but in four years, or six years, or whenever we get ready, we need to be ready to go with something that is a permanent solution, not a four-year solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, the motion is to accept what the staff recommends. The, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll, at this point, ask that we move into executive session, and when we come back, we will, we will start with item number 15. It's 1216, and we will end our public session and enter executive or closed session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.087, to Conduct Economic Development Negotiations. Call the meeting back to order. It's 1:07, and we go with item number 15. This is consideration of approving the correction of a previous change order. Holy smoke, I don't even want to finish reading this. To the contract with Stoddard Construction Management for the construction of the City Hall Plaza Central Plant and for additional work related to the auditorium to increase the contract amount by $72,000 roughly, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any related documents. Assistant City Manager Rick Weiss making the presentation.
I have a housekeeping item for you today, and this is one I catch by default. as we're now cleaning, working on the City Hall project.
Is that a way of saying, "Don't kill the messenger"?
I'm saying, "I'm going to present this and I'm going to go sit down."
Okay.
But no, we are here to answer any questions you have. This item I've looked at, I wasn't involved in this project originally, but I've looked over this and this is indeed just a mathematical error that was made when it was presented. There is no change from a financial standpoint. At the end of the day, the funding is there. But when this item was brought forward to you before, it appears that the contract for Stoddard was reduced when it should not have been reduced. What happened was, there was a seventy-one thousand dollar expenditure that was pertaining to the structure under the auditorium. If you remember, the columns were falling apart. That funding was to come out of the auditorium project, not out of the City Hall project. So while they moved the funding to pay for it from the City Hall project, out of City Hall to fund it through the auditorium, they inadvertently reduced the amount on the Stoddard contract, which they should not have done. Stoddard still did the work regardless of whether it was paid for out of the auditorium or paid for out of City Hall. So this is simply to correct that number on the Stoddard contract, to put it back where it should be. It should not have been deducted in the first place. And the funding is there and always has been there to pay for it. So it's, it was an error that staff had at that time, and this is just to correct it.
Okay, questions? Motion?
I'll make a potion, a potion. A motion to approve the, this change order and get it back to where it should have been.
Second.
Okay.
Potion.
Further questions or comments? Public input, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number sixteen. This is the first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance amending the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget for grants, new projects and incomplete projects. The presentation is by our Budget Manager, Morgan Traynor.
Good afternoon. The caption, I apologize, should have been corrected, that this is simply for a new project. One project in particular, the website, which of course was discussed right before executive session. What you have before you is the thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the redesign, a ten percent contingency for unforeseen costs. If something were to come up, it would be budgeted. And then the six thousand dollars, that was staff's recommendation and y'all's approval to move forward with. So the forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars includes those three items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, questions? Public input, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Morgan, it just, I'm sorry, Mayor, it just doesn't show the ten percent contingency on your.
What you've got in front of you is the lump sum of the forty-three thousand, five sixty-five. And it's in the memo further back in your background, the breakdown of.
Yeah, I'm just saying in the slides it didn't show. It would have been nice.
Number seventeen, item seventeen, consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation by the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, Board of Directors, to ratify change orders one through four to contract number COSA DC dash O one dash eleven, the Business Resource Center, funded by the COSA DC to cover additional costs incurred as a result of required structural modifications to the second floor. These change orders amount to a hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. I have a presentation on this matter from Community and Economic Development Director, Sean Lewis. Sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This project, as you know, has just been completed. And so the change orders that we're asking you to ratify, three of the four change orders that we're asking you to ratify have already taken place. Again, that's a result of COSA DC funding an additional eighty-five thousand back in July that funded what we perceive to be then a shortfall as a result of some problems on the second floor of the building. So COSA DC made that budget change. The city manager approved that budget amendment as he is authorized to do, since it was moving money within the COSA DC budget. And we proceeded with those change orders with the budget being amended properly. And what now I've learned at the end of the project is that according to purchasing and legal, that it would be best if council, your fingerprints were on that, to ratify those change orders. Again, in your original motion, you did authorize the COSA DC President and the City Manager or Designee to execute and negotiate that contract, which we believe gives us the ability to do that. But again, on the advice of council, we are asking for your approval of those change orders.
Motion to approve the recommendations of staff to ratify the change orders one through four.
Second.
Okay, questions of Mr. Lewis?
Sean, it's the same monies, right? Nothing different, nothing that we don't see here.
Correct. Right, it's eighty-five thousand is all that's been added to the project. And again, that was back in the summer when we saw that problem coming.
Okay, public input. Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eighteen, the discussion and consideration of possible water conservation efforts, programs or incentives and any action in connection thereto. I have a presentation by our Assistant City Manager, Michael Dane, and our Customer Service Manager, Tony Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This items, we initially interpreted much more broadly. We talked, we internally talked about code enforcement type activities. We talked about construction code type activities. But we focused based on advice from Mr. Hirschfeld, who wanted to begin this discussion, this public discussion, that we talk about incentives, what do other cities do? What are leading type activities which stimulate conservation efforts among water users? And of course, our leading expert on that is Tony Fox from Water. And so we'll ask Tony to come up and go through it with us.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
It's not my presentation. Thank you. Yes. Okay, in your handouts, it's just, I just did a quick overview of what I've been doing for the last eight years and what basically was done last year and things we're looking at again for this FYI that I'm working with, with McLaughlin, who has our advertising contract with the Water Department. So we do the pre-rolls. Those are still going. You might see those after the weather or just before the weather. They do that quick and tells everybody where we are in the drought level and what we're allowed to do. It gives us our website to make sure that, you know, if they have any questions, they can always go to the website. I have commercials that's been made through other media advantage that go on both the KLST, KLST and the KIDY. Do channel appearances, Channel Seventeen, our city website, public information with Anthony and Brian. They've done a great job getting more information out there for us and assisting with us. We do commercials on some of the cable channels. We've done digital billboards out there year-round. On our monthly bill, there's always some kind of water conservation information on there. Usually what level we're in and what we're allowed to water. So that is on every bill each month for that. I do the Colts baseball out there in the big field. That one's out there all year round. And then when they do the games in the program, one program, the manager signs and whoever has that, they get a goodie bag, which is usually a low-flow showerhead from me. Rain gauges, little things like that that help folks remind them that they need to be conserving water. I'm working with, again, McLaughlin Advertising to get, to look at this next year. Some of the stuff, we're still going to continue on. We like to move things around. So Stephen is looking at some other ways to get the message out there, a little different to, you know, not be so used to one way of the advertising and bring in some different ways to get different markets or different people. I work a lot with the Texas A&amp;M Agriculture, the Master Gardeners. Last month, we just sponsored, helped sponsor a rain harvesting workshop that had almost two hundred people at that. And they do an excellent job. I work with them as often as I can. The Master Gardeners are a big help. They help get the word out there. They help people when they're setting up sprinklers or trying to get plants, working with the public on getting good quality plants that will be drought tolerant. You know, the TV shows I'm on, the noon and the five P.M. And then John Begno, we just made a partnership with John Begno. He's done three videos for us. That should be out there on the website. And we're looking at to do more of these short two-to-three minute videos that will help folks, you know, look at what they're doing and see if they can change their way. So trees, I did some on the trees and the watering during the winter time. So we want to make sure that we're not overwatering, but we don't want to not water enough either. So John Begno is working with us on those videos and we're hoping by springtime to have five, six, seven more of those up and out on the website for everybody. So some of the things in the future that I've looked at, I went out and did some research on the websites and went to some of our benchmark cities, kind of Abilene, Midland, things like that. And I didn't see anything where those particular cities were doing any kind of replacement or rebate programs. So when you look at, you know, I give out rain gauges and some of these promotional items. They're a great idea to let people see those. You know, my hats have it on the back. So, you know, I can always tell when I'm behind someone I've given a hat to because it's got my water conservation stuff on the back. It's always a good way to remind people, but there's no way to quantify if it's really adding savings water, if the people are really taking that information and working on saving water. As I said, I do give out the low-flow showerheads. I've probably given out over five thousand of those over the past five, six years. Those are big savers. They're a one-point-seven-five low-flow showerhead. And they're good showerheads. I've only had, you know, ninety-nine-point-nine percent of the time, the people love them. And if something goes wrong with them, they're back asking for more of those. I give those away at any event I go to. They're free. And they're a good way to have people put those in their showers and use them constantly. So when I looked at those other websites, I thought, well, since the benchmark cities didn't have anything, let me go to the bigger cities. And I looked at Dallas and San Antonio. San Antonio by far is the leader in the state for any kind of rebate programs, replacement programs, whatever you need. I go to Karen all the time. She's the Director of Water Conservation there. So right now, you know, they've been doing a toilet replacement program for twelve, fifteen years. You know, they've got four hundred thousand accounts out there and a lot of toilets, so they're doing that. So we just kind of looked at, what if we did that here? What would it save? So being on the internet, I'm looking at what the average flush is and what the average gallons per a toilet is. And so the average is about five gallons if you don't have one of those low-flow toilets. The toilets are one-point-six gallons, so that's like a three-point-four gallon savings going from the old type to the new type. The average flushes out there are five, give or take. You know, some people use more, some people use less. So when you multiply that five gallons times the three-point-four savings per flush, you get about seventeen gallons per day, per person. So you multiply that by the three-hundred-and-sixty-five days of the year and you receive six thousand, two-hundred-and-five gallons per year each person could save with a low-flow toilet. If you average, you have three people per household. Again, it's just, you know, some will be more, some will be less. It's an eighteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen gallons of water per year savings. Now, in costing these toilets out, you know, San Antonio, their cost is over a hundred dollars for each. Dallas was a little lower. I did some checking here. We could probably get them around eighty-five if we do a bulk purchase. And I'm not sure what that bulk is, if it's a hundred, five hundred, a thousand. But we're kind of guessing around eighty-five dollars. So if you, and then we looked at about how many homes were built before nineteen ninety-two, ninety-four timeframe, because that's the time when the federal government changed the requirement that toilets had to be one-point-six gallons instead of the bigger, higher flush ones. So when I took that times the eighteen sixty-five, fourteen thousand homes, times eighteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen gallons of water, it came out to two-hundred-and-sixty million gallons of water you could save over that time span, at least of the initial installation. Now, if you take fourteen thousand homes and let's say you each have two thousand toilets, uh, two thousand, two toilets, and you times that by the fourteen thousand homes and the eighty-five dollar per cost, you're talking a two-point-three million dollar cost to put those toilets, just to purchase those toilets. That doesn't account for the manpower to track the program, to run the program. It doesn't account for any inspection, if you want to be inspecting to make sure these toilets are getting put in instead of sitting in folks' garage, and any other incidental costs that may be included in some kind of rebate replacement program. There are some other things out there, landscape, irrigation system checkup. Landscapes, I know San Antonio is the only one I could find doing that, and they were giving up to a four-hundred-dollar rebate, but they had a lot of, you know, you had to have fifty percent of this, certain trees, certain grass. And again, it's all in what the city wants to do, how they want to do it, what requirements they want to do. And again, the irrigation system checkup, those are pretty simple, except for you must be a licensed irrigator to be out there doing that. So that includes having hired, you know, full-time or contracting out to licensed irrigators to go do some kind of work like that. And the hot water on demand or some other things that could possibly help the city and help recoup, save water.
I guess in my, my thought process, you're touching on a lot of things that were interesting and that I, you know, kind of had in my mind. I really did not have in my mind of us giving away toilets.
Okay.
I had in my mind of giving ten-dollar coupons that they take to Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever. And I'm sorry, I offended some plumbing house, Angela Plumbing. I guess I have to say them all now.
Yes.
So, but anyway, that they could, you know, use to buy a new toilet. That's kind of the thought process that I saw, something like that. Now, I don't know if and how that would work, but, you know, trying to keep it to the minimum and, you know, not creating a financial horrible burden. Because you got to, you got to be careful. There's, there's two sides of the coin.
Right.
We sell water.
Right.
And it's a revenue source. And while we all need to do our part to conserve as much as we can, we have to be, you know, cognizant of how you pay for that. Because if you reduce your revenue and then take money out of that fund to do the same thing, you're basically killing yourself on the long run. You know, that was, that was just a thought. You know, the other one might, that might be worth thinking about is rainwater collection, too.
Right.
And because I'm, I'm doing that at my house now. And it's, it's, it's probably a payout of about, I don't know, sixty, seventy years is what it will pay out for me with the water savings that I'm, I have.
And again.
And I'm, I'm not joking. I'm serious. It is, it's not a real good return on investment as far as cost goes. But it's.
You did that with the right side of your brain.
I did that with the right side of the brain.
You'll still be on council.
I know, Twain will. But, but, you know, so that's, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. It's just always kind of thinking and looking and seeing if there are as opportunities or avenues come up where if, if and when we could do something, if and when it's something here or something we do there for a limited time and do that kind of stuff. I don't know.
And all those are possibilities and giving out coupons and, and giving part rebates or things like that. I mean, it's going to depend on what we want to do, how much we want to spend and all the items you mentioned in it. There isn't an easy answer.
There's, I mean, one thing I do want to point out, though, is that all these, like, thoughts and ideas can be thrown out there and this is what we're doing at this point. But what I'll, what we'll be doing with the departments here in the very near future is addressing stuff like this and actually developing some planning and steps actually that would address this. Something that we can bring back to the city council and discuss with you and kind of share our thoughts on it. But really to develop some, some action steps and see what we can come up with. But a lot of the challenge will be on, on the staff also. You know, so a lot of these different things that are a priority for the city will be addressing also here in the very near future.
And I commend you. I think the, the program that y'all, the, the program you did, the joint session for the rainwater collection with, continuing that, doing what you're doing with John Begno. And, you know, it's public education, I think, is probably that, as big as anything added to that.
It really is. I'm trying to change people's habits. It's not always easy, but you just keep at it, yes.
Ms. Farmer?
I applaud you also, Tony, in the efforts that you have made, huge strides that you have made with education and trying to change people's habits. That's, that's difficult. Well, I guess what I was thinking and looking at with reference to possible credits that come on a person's bill, if we had a line on the bill, you know, that said something about total rebates or, you know, total conservation, meaning if I brought in the city. Now, these improvements stay with. Now, the, these improvements stay with the home, not the individual who goes and leases another house or buys another house, but stays with that property. If I bring in a receipt that I have replaced three toilets, low flow toilets, that possibly I could look forward to getting a, a $2 credit on my bill each month for a certain length of time. If I bring in a receipt that I have put in an expensive rainwater, you know, system, yeah, it may take 60 years to realize it back, but if I can get a credit on my bill-
You get deemed for doing something that takes 60 years.
That, that I could get a credit of about a buck and a half, you know, per month, then I'm doing another step. If I bring something in that shows that I've got the newest washing machines that use the low flow, if I bring something into you and prove that I'm using that, then I can get a credit, then my total credits might add up to six, seven, eight, 10, $12 a month, then that means something.
Right.
That's a, I think that's a pretty interesting approach myself.
That is, that is. Kind of self-funding itself too.
Yes.
Not having to write a check for 2.3 million dollars.
I wasn't sure if I was following, I mean, exactly what you said was required and like new construction and things like that, but that's a way that you could tackle this when you, when you're doing this with your staff and your departments is there could be maybe some savings for a developer or a builder based on what they put in a home that you give them against their permitting costs or something that-
Exactly.
So if you, if you do these things, then your permit is this much less or, or whatever. So giving you some ideas.
Mr. Silva?
Tony, remind me what that credit is on our bill now?
The conservation credit now? It is if you use 3,000 gallons or less per month, you get the 10% off of the usage and the pumping fee of what, I can't remember exactly what it is. But that's just if you use 3,000 gallons or less per month.
Okay. Other questions for her?
Michael, did you want me to say anything about the winter quarter average on the leak adjustment? Oh, okay.
Well, let me, this may not be the right place, but Michael, the question that I told you that I wanted an answer to, is this a good place for it?
If this is where you want to ask that question, it'd be a good place to answer.
Well, I want to ask, you know, we're figuring people's bills and, and their sewer rate. I recently have discovered and had a water leak end of October, November, just got it That's great and wonderful. The city has a form that you can fill out, that you can get a relief, you know, from that, but you can only use that once every three years. Now, I don't know the purpose behind the three years, so maybe you can tell me and the public can hear now, what is the purpose of a, for, you know, one time only every three years? And I have another part to the question.
I, I honestly don't know that answer. That's been there for some time, as far as I know.
Well, and the reason I'm curious is our shifting soils that we have here and the drier, the drought season that we have, it seems like the once every three years is penalty. You know, it just seems like it's a penalty when we have drought years. So I, I want you to look at that and to consider that. And the other thing is, is if a person has a water leak, and if you're unfortunate to have it during the time that sewer rates are set, it's based on that average. I'm rocking along, say a person uses 5,000 gallons a month, and then all of a sudden they get to that leak and they're 40,000, they get it fixed, but it's during that sewer setting time. What is the city doing to make sure that that individual person doesn't get charged at that one time or two times, you know, month to month, October, November rate to bring them down? What are you doing?
December, January, February, and it is, when the leak adjustment is submitted, when billing does the corrections on the leak adjustments, does their adjustment, they do adjust the sewer rate also.
What do you mean leak adjustment submitted? Who's going to do that?
Like when you turn yours in, and I, you know, I, the gals fill it, you know, you fill it out, you turn it in, we send it up to billing because they do all the adjustments.
So that form that's once every three years, I would have to submit that.
Yeah, for any leak adjustment.
Not necessarily requesting that I be refunded or, or given a break, but I'm more interested in my sewer rate adjustment.
Right. And if you've had a leak and you're not requesting a leak adjustment, all you have to do is let me know, let the gals know, and we can send that information up to the billing department that they've had a leak, they're not requesting the leak adjustment per se, but would like their sewer-
Amount adjusted.
Rate adjusted, yes.
Public needs to know that.
That's very easy to do.
And I did too, because I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay, you answered my question.
Other questions for her?
The question that I had was the one that you were mumbling to Michael Dane.
It was that question.
Was that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Michael told me it was coming and then it didn't happen.
I'm not sure what my question is, but the one you were trying to hide, we want that one answered.
I just didn't want to leave here with any questions, so.
I didn't want to speak off topic.
Right, well-
Okay. I think our, I think our discussion item has been taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 19 is the discussion of late fees associated with the city's utility bill and any action in connection there too, and it's Assistant City Manager Michael Dane.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We had a, Councilman Silva said he wanted to discuss this, what, how did these work? How long have they been in effect? And so this presentation is not designed to answer all questions or anticipate all questions, but to introduce the topic and open the public discussion on this. It's come up before and, and we're going to discuss it again today.
Michael, can I add before you start that the reason I brought it, I had a couple of folks, you know, taxpayers, one of them happened to be on fixed income, thought that the $25 fee was just exorbitant, you know, just kind of high and didn't understand where they, that amount came from. And I think Council Morrison had mentioned that this had been brought up before, and I was very curious to see what, if anything, we can do to, to help those folks out there that are struggling to even pay. You know, the $25 a lot of times is just half of their, the bill they're paying already. So that's, that's my interest in saying, is there anything we can do out there to either get rid of this or charge a certain percentage or just something for us to, another avenue for us to look at, so.
Well, it's a good topic. When it was introduced and originally passed, it was a split vote at that time. It was not a unanimous vote. It's been brought up occasionally from time to time. So today's a good opportunity for us to discuss it again. The $25 can be a large, a relatively large percentage of what people pay. And, and that is one of the, one of the knocks against a straight level fee amount rather than a percentage. And it's a question of how do we want to utilize that fee? Do we want it to be there to dissuade people from paying late? Do we want it to be a recovery of lost investment opportunity on our part? What is the purpose of that fee in our minds? And, and that's a, that's very much a policy decision that can be made at this level.
Michael, that is, I do want to make sure that I point something out, and I know that Tony is here also. The $25 is assessed after, if we have a minimum of $30 fee, is that correct, on the, on the water bill? Tony? It's with the minimum of $30, is that correct? At that point, a $25 late fee can be assessed?
Yes, that is what is on-
Okay, so it's not, so if you have a bill of $15, then it won't going to play at that point?
No.
So it's only after $30 that-
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
Well, you know, I do recall in 2005 when I, we were looking for ways to not raise water rates across the board to help pay for things. And one of my big deals was at that time and still is, you're only attaching a fee to the people that use or abuse, either way. If I need to use a few extra days until this money comes in, then I'm getting the advantage of that and I should pay a fee, and that's a $25 fee. You know, the $10 fee back in years before 2000, before 2005, there was a lot of abuse. People, oh, $10, I'll pay my water bill late. And it really was writing the city for money owed. And I noticed in your brief here that just in this year alone, through September 30th, a million 499,387 in net receipts in the $25 water fee.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's a full fiscal year, that's 12 months.
A lot of money to me and says volumes that if you're going to get the water that is so precious, you know, you've got to pay the bill. And the city can generate a source of income for the city through either a user or abuser in that, and not make it across the board to everyone out there. And those who do pay their bills on time are not penalized by a higher rate, should that be the only other alternative. So I'm fine with the late fee of $25. It's $25 on just about everything, most of them, a lot of them gone up to $30, but I'm, I'm fine with the $25.
What do those two numbers mean?
Yeah.
Good question. They're both net amounts. In other words, the, the revenue account where we post late fees has 1.5 million dollars worth of late fee receipts in it. That is net of amounts that are, that were written off. And that net fees collected item is simply a computation of the 1.5 divided by 25. In other words, the 59,000, the 60,000 is, is simply that revenue amount divided by 25. We didn't actually count the, the fees levied because there were, there, when you write off an account, you write off a partial late fee.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm so slow. I got it.
I'm slower than you though.
You have 60,000 occurrences.
Okay.
That's not a, that's not a dollar number. You have 60,000 occurrences-
Good, very good point.
Times $25 gives you a million and a half dollars.
Over what period?
Last complete fiscal year, 12 months.
33,000 meters and you have 60,000 occurrences, that's an average of two late fees per meter, about, so that's right, but that's a lot.
It is. And so, you know, from a policy standpoint-
That's what it's, that's what it says, exactly.
If we go back to what the ordinance says, it says 28 days. If you feel like 25 is too low or too high, that can be adjusted. If 28 days is too high or too low, that, we can look into adjusting that. It very much is a values-driven policy and our folks spend a lot of time trying to manage delinquent accounts, both the collection and whether or not they should be turned off, when they should be turned off. If you're in business where you collect revenue, you know that that's an, can be an onerous task. And so the question is, what are the values for this organization related to charging late fees?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, Mr. Silva.
First of all, will percentages work? Will a percentage instead of the 25 work?
Good.
One. And two, I've had folks that are, for example, social security, they have tried and tried to get their bill due date or date or whatever adjusted to when their check comes in, you know, the second third of the month, whenever it comes in, and they have run into brick walls. So I think that if we're running it on an average of two late charges per month or whatever we're coming up with, could we not make it more user-friendly for them to, hey, readjust their due date and maybe help them in that way, you know? Again, percentages and then that, that second question.
Both good questions. Percentages, we've already checked on, and our system will accommodate a percentage-based fee. So if council said we want X percent, we would do the research to confirm that we can change the fee to that level. Part of changing the fee becomes the budgetary analysis, what is the budgetary impact of changing a fee? That can become part of our discussion. The other, the other part of that was due dates. That is difficult when you're doing manual reads. You know, when we send Rick out to walk a circuit, walk a cycle and read, that limits your flexibility for, for how you set due dates. In the new AMR system, there, there, we're anticipating greater flexibility for set, for setting due dates. I would like to pay my bill on the 16th, or I'd like you to close my monthly cycle out on the 16th of each month. We're anticipating that there will be greater flexibility there and that customers will be, will have more latitude, more freedom to set those. In fact, we talked about the website earlier. Our ambition, our goal for the website is to be able to do some of that automatically on the website and not have to call, but with, that's a topic for another day. So yes, Mr. Silva, percentages can work. We'll need to do the analysis and show you the impact. And two, if you're on AMR, can we change AMR due dates? If you're on AMR now, everybody's still in cycles right now. So right now, there's limited flexibility for changing due dates. But we can look into that, we can follow up with that and see what kind of flexibility we can begin building in.
You know, I, I would think in this high-tech world we live in, automatic meter reads, you could adjust, I may be wrong, but also another, another brick wall, so to speak, some of the folks are running into is, say the, say my bill is due today, if I don't pay it by 3 o'clock, then, you know, I go there and it's not going to be applied till the next day. Why do we, why, I understand, I think I was told one time, they cut it off at 3 so they could make the deposit at the bank, that's what I heard. Why do we have to cut it off at 3? I mean, you can, you can cut it off at 3, but if I pay it the same day, why not go ahead and give me credit for the same day? I mean, it just, is there a security reason that, you know, we have to deposit the cash, the checks?
You're on it, you're exactly right. But if we need to build, if this council says we want to build that extra day where you get credit all day long and we'll just eat the extra day, that's something we can look into.
That's just one of the other issues that I, I've heard, so. Tony, what do you have?
Regarding your folks on social security or disability, we can fix date on those and I, we've done it on numerous people they call, say I'm on social security disability. All we ask is that they prove that, have some kind of form that show that they are on social security and disability. And, you know, a lot of them say I get paid the third Wednesday of the month, so I will look at what the range is for the third Wednesday of the month, and let's say it's between the 18th and the 20th. I can fix them out to like the 22nd, 23rd, giving them a few extra days just to make sure they have time to get in. But the problem is with anybody who's on auto draft or any kind of bank like that, the system won't allow us to fix date, fix due date on anybody who's on an auto payment. But if they're sending in a check or coming by, driving by, doing that, if they're on social security disability is all, all they have to do is show that they are on that and we can fix them a date depending on when those checks come into them.
Can you put, I know one lady had two meters and she had constantly tried to get those two meters put on one bill and was told you could not.
Two meters at two different locations?
No, it's the same location.
So a sprinkler and a water meter?
Uh, no, it was just, I'll tell you what it was, it was a business, okay?
Okay.
With two meters.
Ask her to give me a call and let me know about that.
And not only was she getting a, a late charge twice, but she had struggled trying to get those two meters, you have to, having to waste like two different checks or two credit card.
I can answer that question, believe it or not. I asked Mary Cleveland, and she said, because we, we have properties with lots of meters and they're, we get tons of bills, we want them on one bill, she says they're working on that. They're, they're actually working on it, trying to get that done. So that's a future item, but they're on it.
Back to your budgetary comment, you can't tell me you sat there and thought about that last year we're going to have 60,000 occurrences? I mean, did you foresee that or is that the, that's the way I took it, but?
We did budget for, I don't have the documents in front of me. Not 60,000, we budget based on the revenue, the general trend. And so the budget for this, I think, is about 1.3 million.
So even prior year to this, it was about the same?
I'd have to pull that information and get you some trend-type information.
It was over a million dollars?
I think, oh, I think it has been. I don't think this is a new phenomenon. But again, the power of the, of shaping the policy is in your hands and if you have a proposal, we'll, we'll take, research it, determine what its impact is and what the implement, how, how possible it is to implement it and report back to you.
I'd be very interested on the 5% charge, to see what impact it would make.
I, I was going to say that if you want 1.499 million dollars in revenues, you can target that and get it with a certain, there's a percentage out there that represents, it's a num, I don't know how, you got, I only have two numbers, you have more numbers than me.
Well, I know what you're talking about.
It may be 7.6%, you may come back with me, to me with a number like that. So I think, okay, wait, I would say that $100 or less is a $10 fee and a, maybe 200 or less is $200- or less is $200 fee, I mean, $20 fee. I mean, there's a way to do this.
Well, a stepped fee like that, I think, is going to be more difficult. We have confirmed that the percentage is no problem, we can do that.
Okay, so a percentage, I'm looking for that percentage that gives us those revenues, we don't want to take a hit on that, that messes up our budget, but you're going to hit the people that owe a lot of money harder and get them to pay faster probably because they're looking at $25, "Come on, that's nothing, I owe, I owe $1,000, $25 is nothing." They ignore it and then we need that bill paid, that's the one we need paid more. So, for us, it encourages the ones that owe us more money to pay us quicker.
Well, what I'm hearing is that 1.499 million is an effective percentage of what revenue. If we can pull the bills that had these late, that had a late fee with them, determine what the base charges were, we know what the late fees were, we can calculate an effective percentage. This was a, we can solve for the percentage that resulted in. And then we can somewhat reliably predict what a different percentage might do.
The only, in general, I can see what you're describing, Mr. Alexander. The only thing I would want to be sure that city staff is thinking through is back to the water leak issue. You don't, you don't want a one-time occurrence that hits a resident, takes their normal bill from $50 to $480 and then takes 29 days to solve their problem and now they owe you, you know, so just careful that you think through that process a little bit while you're thinking, okay? But anyway.
Can you do it first? I'm sorry.
I do know that the Public Utility Commission governs the late fees on utilities and what is acceptable and not acceptable when it comes to percentages and like you say, that can start messing things up and forgetting the percentages, but the flat fee currently is, we checked on this in 2005, and the flat fee of the $25 is an acceptable fee with the Public Utilities Commission.
I think what you've got to be careful about on the percentages is that, you know, if you're talking at 10%, if that, I don't know what has been thrown around, you have a $50 bill, that's five bucks. And why pay? I mean, it's.
I suppose I was going to say, you need a minimum, there needs to be a minimum of $10 or something, you can't, and so there's a little boost in revenue, so you're going to have a little complicated, more complicated calculation.
That is, complication is a good point.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
When we originally dealt with this, and I can remember dealing with it twice, the problems that we had with it was that $25 is a punitive amount. Setting a $25 fee is a very punitive and a very expensive penalty for a low-water user, but it has already been brought out. For a high-water user, it is nothing. So, if it was a percentage, it's going to be the same, everything will be relevant, everything will be fair. It's going to be a high fee on the high-water user and it will be a reasonable fee on the low-water user, but it will not be punitive. If an individual gets a water bill for $50 and he's a day late and it cost him $75, there are many, many people in our city that this hurts, this is damaging. It's a budget destroyer. But if the bill is for $500, $25 is a very small amount. It is a, it is a penalty on the low-water users, but it is not a deterrent for the high-water users and it's unfair to them. So, it's a punitive amount that needs to be adjusted. A percentage would work.
Good point, you know, and that is very much what is this council's philosophy on managing the punitive side versus the, you know, the cash flow management side.
My sense, individual sense of it, not, I'm not reading council, but is that a percentage makes some sense with a minimum, with a minimum base fee because, again, if you, at some point, you're not, you're back to where you were in 2005 in the first place where your 60,000 incidences are now 75,000 incidences because you're not, you're not encouraging people to pay their bill, you know, get your bill paid. And so, but if my bill is $30 and my late fee is $25, that seems a little onerous. So, I kind of myself like the idea of it being a percentage-based fee with a floor. I mean, it's not going to be less than whatever that number ought to be, but I don't think a $50 bill ought to have a $5 fee on it. I think whatever that number would be, you know, it was 10, now it's 25, you know, whatever, but you get, that's my sense of it. Mr. Morrison?
I might also add that there is also, we also hold a key to this. If someone is habitually late every month with this fee, pull the meter and I guarantee you it will solve the problem. So, this, it's punitive.
I don't know what the legal problems are with turning people's water off, I mean, from a hygiene, but I mean, from a hygiene perspective, I don't know how hard it is for y'all to turn a meter off, but.
Mayor, you're correct, we have to follow our ordinance and right now, we do have a procedure that provides for an appeal and we need to follow that if we want to incorporate other procedures, we'll need to amend the ordinance and I think Ms. Fox has been contemplating, looking at that.
Okay. One thing I'm also not sure I'm understanding, but I thought this said if you're 28 days late, this isn't, you know, this isn't.
This isn't one or two days.
This isn't that I missed paying, I missed paying my bill a day late, it says, says that I'm 28 days late. I mean, come on, so, anyway.
Let me throw this out.
That's amazing.
28 days. There's two water, there's two water bills in this world, I mean, right? You got one and you didn't pay it, you've gotten another one, I mean, that's what's going on here.
But even, 28 is, this includes one day. If I'm one day late.
No.
I thought this was the day after.
28 days after the billing date.
That's what our current ordinance provides and we also follow state law.
It's late, 28 days after the billing.
Yeah, see, I probably do, I probably have a little concern with that because.
Is that a little quick?
Think, well, no, I just think of 30-day terms on so many things, it's once a month.
But are we talking about after the due date?
No, billing date.
Billing date.
The TCEQ provides that.
I don't know either.
I don't know many utilities that offer 30 days net. Let me know and I'll be happy, I'd like to find out.
Exactly.
My gas bill, my electric bill, they're typically net 10, basically.
Right. But the TCEQ does have administrative regulations that talk about limitations for cutoff for non-payment and so, right now, our ordinance comports with that.
It's 28 days from the time you got your bill.
And this is, and I'm not saying, I'm doing what the taxpayers out there wanted me to do, bring it up for discussion, discussion only, and that's what we're doing. But let me throw this out there, could you, can we get both, say, for example, we do a $10 base fee, a late fee plus a 10% fee, could you both?
That's one of the questions I have down. I have, what is the effective percentage for the total revenue we're generating? Can we do a percentage with a floor, a minimum? And so, we'll need to bring that answer back. And then the other question I've got here is, what kind of flexibility do we have with number of days until late? Maybe where we are is good, but we ought to be able to answer the question for what kind of flexibility does this council have for setting that timeframe?
And that's all I wanted, just this discussion that happened is what I was asked.
Thank you very much. Let's move on then to item number 20. This is also, you like public input, Mr. Turner, come on up. I do got to turn this damn thing on.
Yes, Jim Turner, again, one additional thing that might be useful to look at also is if there couldn't be some sort of a cumulative late fee, if you're 10 days late, it's this much, if you're 20 days late, it goes up to a higher level, kind of a, not interest, but a, an additional fee for being overly late. If you couldn't have, and that would be something I think worth bringing back also, if you could have a fee for five days late, 10 days late or 30 days late as opposed to just one late fee, where you could actually have it based on how late they were.
Thank you. Okay, item number 20, this is the discussion of the water utility billing structure and procedure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry, Mayor, did you already introduce item number 20?
I just introduced it, I didn't introduce you, but here you go.
Daniel, how would you like me to start this? Would you like me to, or Mr. Morrison, would you like to introduce the item? Would you like me to begin?
I'll be glad to tell you where the basis that I'm coming from on this and we can go from there.
Well, let me pull up the, let me pull up the presentation.
Okay.
As we move through the work time between last council meeting and this council meeting, Mr. Valenzuela said that he'd had a brief conversation, Mr. Morrison, about some information Mr. Morrison would like. How does the water revenue, what you see on your bill, how does that move into accounts, into operating and capital, dedicated capital-type activity? And so, today, we wanted to bring, again, brief information about how that moves, what you see on your bill and what ends up in the financials in the way of introducing or beginning a conversation about water revenues or the water fund. So, we have an example bill here, we're going to focus in on the right side, the account activity. You'll see in there, what we want to focus on is water. When you pay that water amount, how does it break down to operations and capital monies? We're going to look at the items in that red section. In this example, we have a 5/8 meter with 8,000 gallons usage, water base fee at this, for this meter size of $19.12. The, those usage lines add up to $27.23. And the water pumping fee, there's an IV pumping charge is what we used to call that, associated with variability in electric rates and pumping that, the electricity necessary to pump that water, that kind of thing. So, the water portion of this bill, $47.71. So, what we want to do on this slide, we're going to break that 47.71, if you look at the middle of the slide, that first column totals 47.71, that's the same number we saw on this slide, if you look over on the right side. We're going to break that down between operating and capital monies. So, we've got a base fee, that first row across there, that charge, as we showed on the previous page, $19.12. $15.80 goes into the operating fund. $3.32 goes into that capital fund where the money is dedicated for capital projects. For the usage charges, those were, I think, three or four lines on that previous slide, three lines totaling $27.23, $19.63, so that gets split out to operations and $7.60 to capital. And then that last, that pumping fee, the charge of $1.36, all of that goes to operations, that's where that electric bill is paid and nothing to capital there. So, you can see in this example, the total water portion of the bill, $47.71, 36.79 went to operations and $10.92 went to capital.
In cap, in capital, that's not necessarily like, you know, saving up money for something, I mean, it's paying debt service and things of that nature for projects or, is that correct?
Good point, that's, it's all the above. To the extent that we have debt service, we need to provide for making those payments, we have some pay-as-you-go projects, and if the money comes in faster than the project payments go out, then it does accumulate and becomes available for executing future projects. So, it is both debt service and saving up for. If you look at that, this was looking at it on the individual bill level, if you look at it, oops, if you look at that from, in the aggregate, what you get are basin, starting over on the left, the fiscal year actuals, fiscal year 2012 actuals, the basin usage fees that went into operations, 19.6 million, with approximately 4.7 million that went into capital. If you look at those pumping fees, approximately 683,000, all went to operations. And so, you have those totals there for that fiscal year 12. For the fiscal year 13, budgeted lines, budgeted amounts, same thing, basin usage, approximately 19.6 budgeted with 4.8 budgeted for capital and pumping fees are anticipated to be 790,000 in operations and zero in capital because we don't, we don't move those over there. So, that is one way to look at it from the, in the aggregate. This is a little bit different view, but it's the same information, water sales, basin usage. Note that we've just changed columns and rows, that on the top are operating fiscal year 12 actuals compared to fiscal year 13 budgeted, side by side, pumping fees, side by side, and then below that, capital fund, same numbers, again, except the capital money here is broken down into base and usage. Note on that previous page, we had that, the total revenue, but here, we've broken it down between base and usage so you can see what the relative impact of those is. In addition to that, on the bottom left of this screen, we'll zoom in here in a minute, there's a disclosure about how much of your, of this bill is going to capital projects. And you note that in the red oval, where that disclosure is, that is on that previous page in the bottom left. And on this example bill, the $10.92, but there's also a portion of the sewer base fee which is dedicated for capital, that's $4.64, in this example, for a total of 15.56 on this bill that went toward capital issues.
The first individual breakout, not the conglomerate, bingo, oops, is that the same bill?
That's the same bill.
Okay, but your, your capital contribution is 15.56 and over here, it's 10.
Good question. That includes sewer. There is a dedicated portion of sewer fees. See, the bill, the disclosure covers all of what you're paying here, but in our example, we were focusing on water.
Okay.
So, the water portion is the 10.92, but the 15.56 represents all, all of this bill which went toward capital issues.
Okay.
Again, the mindset being, we need to be addressing infrastructure-type issues, how much of my bill is going to prevent the kind of problems we've had in the past. So, this disclosure, I think the philosophy behind that, council asked for that, was, tell us what you're setting aside for infrastructure issues. And in this bill, a total of 88.24, $15.56.
Okay, we used to break this out and put it in the bill, and I have pictures of it, the way the bill used to look like, but Ms. Farmer and I and even Johnny could not read it, we couldn't, us as council people could not read the bill, it was too complicated and it really was, I still would have to use a code to figure it out. So, it's simplified and you get what you see, what you're paying for is what you see, and then it breaks it out to the side, but you don't see the fine-tune breakout, you don't see the details, you just get one number at the side, it says, this is how much went to capital.
It's a good point, for some, this isn't enough information and for some, it's too much. You know, when you're dealing with a wide range of customers, that is one of the dilemmas you face, how much information to give.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
I appreciate all of this, I mean, it's a good presentation, but this isn't at all what I asked for. And to quote what I've asked for for the last two meetings is an audit of the water department, and I even used the phrase, "top to bottom and side to side." That is the phrase. This is great. I want an audit of the entire water department, including water utility billing. Now, I don't know whether I can talk about that since you have said water utility billing structure and procedure, but this is, this is nothing what I asked for. I asked for an audit, a discussion on an audit, and I still haven't got it.
I believe that you're correct, that the two things, what you're describing and what was described, aren't quite the same thing, so.
This is pretty, I mean, I appreciate it, but it's absolutely nothing what I asked for.
Okay, well, we're about to ask again, you're nearly there.
I would like for it to be put on the next agenda.
It's too late, and here's why. I know, I'll tell you, I mean, Lacy, we've been communicating via email, the next point in which we can ask for an audit, a more defined audit of the water department is just. is January 2nd. Isn't that right? When the, the people that come to audit us meet with us on January 2nd and say, look, this is what we, we're gonna audit your city, but is there anything you want to audit more, pay more attention to? And they ask questions and we say yes. And we can say, yes, the water department, we want to add more auditing.
That's because we have a contract and we have an audit procedure in place, but it is an audit that is, is general and it's not directed specifically. It's what the auditors find, they, they review their findings and are you saying that you...
I thought, I have to write them a little email.
Go ahead.
I thought we could add on to it by request.
Well, you certainly could request the city manager to examine what you might want to be included in the audit, but we do have a procedure, so I would just suggest that you make that known to him, so he could direct staff to direct the auditor.
Okay. Let's, let's close this discussion, let's, let's close this discussion. If she, okay, question on this?
I don't have a question, but the, we just received the single audit report that our accounting, the accounting of the water bills, the water department was audited, along with all the other departments. We received the report and the report's in pie form as to the percentages of what went to operations, cost, employees' salaries, of all the monies that were collected.
Now, that's one of the two things I'm, I want to talk about.
Okay.
Okay?
May I conclude what I was saying?
Of course. Go ahead.
Neil? At the last meeting, I had received 50 emails, people requesting an audit of the water department. As of yesterday, that amount is 440 people. 440 citizens of our city have requested an audit of our water utilities billing and there has been a variety of problems. 440 people tell me that we have a serious problem in water utilities. Because of the recent developments in our water department and the departures of our two lead men in the water department, I feel that we have a problem in our water department.
Okay, Duane, I'm trying to get you there, please. I want to close this.
May I finish what I'm saying? I've been cut off every time.
I think you're off topic and that's why I keep interrupting you. Okay, I'm trying to get you off of 20 and get it closed, so I can get you to the point where you can't talk.
I will make another request at the end of this meeting for an audit.
Thank you. That's all I'm trying to do, is get us off of 20, because that's not, now, again, Mr. Silva, I don't mind, but this is water utility billing. This, what you just saw, please.
I have one simple question to Tony or Michael. I've been asked before, the, this water billing, is, does the software allow it to, to be printed in Spanish? Can we get this in a Spanish translation? Does that software do that? Because there's some folks out there that would request for it that way, if it was available that way, so.
I don't know that answer. We can look into that.
That's my question.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close our discussion on item number 20. Move us to follow-up and administrative issues. There is not anything from the executive session. Let's knock out item number 22 and then, and then talk with Mr. Morrison on item number 23. Item number 22 is the confirming of a park commission's nomination, Julia Lane. You all remember that under the setup of the new system, the parks commission makes one of the nomin, maybe more than one of the nominations, but anyway.
Motion to approve.
I'll say that.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Morrison, number 23.
I would like to have on the very next agenda, an item for discussion. I am calling for a total, complete, absolute audit of the water department, including wat, water utility billing. I would like an audit and discussion on the audit. I can't make it any clearer.
Okay. There seem to me to be two things that we could, you could get.
Well, then, let's make two, two, two agenda items. I want an audit of water utility. I want an audit of the entire water department.
Okay, and what I'm, I think during that discussion, the two things you want to talk about are that, one is what do you want Mr. Valenzuela and staff to create in that audit? Okay, of the, the, because I think that's what they're saying, is that you're about to have your accountants do your audit. You're about to tell them what you want done. So, that, and the second thing is what you want the audit committee to do in that process, okay?
I would like to have a discussion about the possibility of an audit. I've got several cars. I could take one to a mechanic and say, fix this car, everything that's on it that'll get me the Lubbock back safely. And it's gonna cost me a tank of gas and a wash. I've got another one, that if I went and said the exact same thing, fix this car so I can get the Lubbock back safely, when I go to pick it up, I'm gonna have a motor overhaul, a transmission overhaul and a front end overhaul. There are different levels of audits. I want a complete audit of water department and water utilities billing. And I would like to have a discussion about it. And this is the third time I've asked for it.
Set up as a discussion then, I mean, and from there, we can move forward after that discussion on the next city council meeting, as far as how to approach it.
I think that, I think that that can work. And I think, the question is gonna, the discussion can get us there.
Sure.
What I'm wanting to do is give them instruction, which is what your discussion can do and that's fine.
I think the difficulty is that we, the city is complying with the law and we do the audit according to our charter and our ordinances. So, we've just completed one and there's a timetable. There's no provision in state law for an, an audit outside of that to be petitioned or required. So, we are performing the audit, so what the mayors articulated that the city manager will do, will be to define some of the limitations and boundaries of the upcoming audit. But I don't know if we have a provision in, in addition to what we, the city is already doing as it's legally required to do, which is the audit, and we have a firm and we proceed with our yearly audit.
Do you agree that there are different levels of audit?
Well, having worked with the audit division of the state comptroller, I thoroughly understand that, but in this, so in a general sense, there can be different parameters for audits to be conducted.
That's what I want. I want the absolute parameters.
However, that would be something that the city manager would have to examine and direct.
But I can't even get it on the agenda for discussion.
Can I just give a suggestion?
Yes.
And I think this, to me, this might solve it. We have an audit committee, correct? And I think it would be great for you to go to that audit committee and tell them exactly what they want, because they're the one, the audit committee kind of directs our auditors on what to do, how to do it, when to do it. Am I correct?
You're correct. They manage the relationship.
Okay, so, that's the, isn't that the place to start, where, I mean, and then it could happen?
May I throw this in, Ms. Bowling? When, when Ms. Farmer held up the audit that I just did last time, that was an audit of the whole organization.
Correct.
And I believe Mr. Morrison is asking for the water department, because we all are getting these emails asking for...
Oh, I thoroughly understand.
Income and expense of what's happening within the water billing department. And I think that's all he's asking for, is just to target that one department and see what's going on there.
Right. And I just offer to you, because I was, I had done a legal opinion previously, under our charter, charter section 34, we are doing an independent audit. There is no provision for a selective audit, so it's something that the city manager will have to look at and respond to, because right now, and let me just read to you, section 34, and I think I provided this to all, but audit examination, as soon as practical after the close of each fiscal year, an independent audit shall be made of all accounts of city government. We, and we have a firm that has no personal interest and we perform that and we post the results for the public. So, what you're asking for, again, under the, any other provision under state law, there is no vehicle to create what you're asking for. So, the city manager can respond to that request by, and as the mayor suggested, perhaps giving some parameters to the, to the audit committee for the audit.
Because does not the, does not what's happening now, and we're all experiencing it or have heard of it, of these outrageous of water bills happening, I mean, that, that ought to send out, send up a red flag. And I think that's where...
But what I hear, I mean, I, I hear a lot of conflicting data. I'm getting, I don't know how many, but it's hundreds of, where it'll say 10 more people have signed and five more people have signed and I signed and on all the different, I'm getting all of that as you are, okay? But I also know that when we met with the group, there were 10 people there, okay? Not hundreds of people at that meeting, 10. And, and then I also know that what I understand from the data is that the number of weird water bills or high water bills is fairly consistent with what it always is. So, so I'm wanting us to, to get back on track with that. What do we have? Do we have a data, you know, what does the data tell us? Do we have a lot of weird water bills, Johnny, Mr. Silva, or do we have the same number we always do? And what I'm wanting to do also is we're, we're about to start the new audit. The new audit committee is gonna be involved in that process and Mr. Valenzuela. And so, as a council, from a policy perspective, when he's negotiating the audit with the local firm, he could, he could then say, let's, let's spend some extra time against the number of water bills that are out of line or that are, you know, and focus some extra attention on what's going on in our water department.
And we're already on that part of it. I mean, as far as the audit cycle, it's here already. I mean, starting anew again here in January, and we can request that information, any additional information that's, that you would like to see also, but again, we're, we're there at that point anyway. We did have a budget, I mean, an audit committee meeting also. We can address specifically what we'd like to see and then there, as far as our auditors are willing to provide that information, but we're at that point right now.
And we're finally getting some discussion on it, which is exactly what I had been asking for.
And Mr. Mayor, to answer that, wasn't a question, but I've been here five years and I have never heard of 1,700, $14,000 water bills, so this is a first for me. So, that, that's where I think the concern is coming from, so.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're taking care of your constituents and trying to get some answers and, and that's fine with me, of course, okay? I, I don't know, I get, unfortunately, I guess I get one every couple of months, somebody that's very concerned about how high their water bill was and, and sometimes how it was handled, how, you know, they feel like they were going in and saying, my water bill's out of whack and not, and, and so I, I feel like it's, it, from my perspective, feels fairly normal, but I get that fairly often, but...
And I'm about to have a meeting with a constituent and with Mary Cleveland, because the constituent showed me a water bill that for the past three, four months, maybe even longer, has been somewhere around $420, but the usage is zero, it's zero, zero, zero. So, little things like that, that kind of send up a red flag, is that what is going on out there? $420 with zero usage.
Somebody's gotta be able to explain it, for sure. This is outside norm, because we're really past everything, but come on up and...
They continue on, it sounds like, again, one of the things I'm hearing is there's actually two things that are needed. And Ms. Bowling is completely correct that an audit has a certain specific function. What I think we're getting into here is actually council's investigatory powers. What we need here, in addition to the audit, is an investigation of the water department. It includes things like, how is it backbinding on how these high bills are coming up? An audit won't show you some of what you need. An audit's not the right tool. This needs to be an investigation also, so that needs to be happening at the same time you're discussing auditing it. We need to be investigating the problems you're having. And city council by charter has the authority to investigate anything within the city that they deem needs investigating. That's really what you need, is an investigation in addition to the audit, which is focused for a very specific purpose, that this goes beyond. Thank you.
Good point, Turner. Add that to what I'm asking for, that I want a city council investigation of water department policies and water utility billing. I use the word audit, possibly I use the wrong word. I want to know why this is happening.
The, the one thing to keep in mind too, is that we have a new city manager, we have a new water utilities director, and there, there's, there's a complete shakeup up there. And frankly, I have a lot of faith in these two gentlemen that, to see what's going on and to make some improvements and changes in the coming time. So, you know, I, i- if things were not, if things were the same as they were nine months ago, six months ago, same staff and everything like that, I'd be right on board with you. But I'm saying, we've got two people here that I'd like to see, give them the, the crux of saying, yeah, let's see where we're gonna go with this thing.
And I could agree with you to a point, but if I were these two gentlemen that were taking over departments, that we know there's problems in, if I was Dixon and, and Daniel, I would be screaming for an investigation to see just exactly what I am inheriting and what I'm working with. I would want to know the positives and the negatives, and this will tell us that.
We are working on issues right now, Duane. As far as looking at the water department, some of the issues that have come up in that department, we've been addressing as we, as we move along. Of course, I'm still doing a lot of the running around and meeting greets and everything else, but even in talking to Ricky, we do realize that there's been some issues, working with, with Tony and Mary and everyone else. We're trying to make sure, of course, and just like was mentioned, is that especially moving forward, that we're taking care of business at this point. But we are looking back also to see if there's any issues that perhaps we need to correct. You know, especially if we had a citizen that was treated unjustly and fairly, as far as fees and so forth, you know? Those are things that, again, we're taking quite seriously and we are looking into.
You need to go ahead and talk about your exceptions reporting, because that's part of what you've done or what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Along, along with that also is, of course, on a, on a weekly basis, is receiving a report just to let me know, you know, the number of complaints that have come in, you know, in that department. What are we doing as far as a form that will show exactly what the complaint was, who complained, how it was resolved? There's, I mean, the exceptions reporting also will, will kind of give us a good indication as far as the service that we're providing at this point, you know? The thing is, is that we're not sitting still on this. This is something that, again, we are taking very seriously. We want to fix what's broken at this point and we're gonna move forward with that also. Again, I want to make sure that the citizens understand, rest assured, that this is not something we're taking lightly. I want to make sure that they are treated fairly.
Plus, being able to look at, you know, bills that are zero or a credit and make sure why that has happened and bills that are more than a certain percentage higher than normal and, and try...
Correct.
In other words, on a proactive basis, having it pop up and it's just, it's exceptions reporting. It's just saying, this bill's 150% of normal, why? And that way, you don't have to wait on the citizen to, to come tell you, you know, my bill is ridiculous this time. You, you have something popping up telling you, my bills are ridiculous.
One of the, one of the concerns, of course, and I'll say this very briefly, is that we, some of the petitioners that are signing the petition at this point, well, there's no way of getting ahold of these individuals. We'd love to be able to talk to them, get ahold of them, find out what the issue is. I know I've talked to Ricky about this, who's met with Tony, and I mean, we're, we're trying to get ahold of all these individuals to resolve these concerns. Some individuals, we just have absolutely no way of getting ahold of them, you know? So, again, we'll do everything on our part and we definitely ask our citizens to help us out also. If a concern comes up, immediately contact us. We'll do everything on our part to, to resolve that concern.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
We're ready?
I was being patient, because you've asked...
Agenda.
Okay, I'll start where we are, and that is, in October, Neptune, who makes the AMR meters, came in and audited our procedures on how we install them, how we, how we set them up, read them, except, but there's no PR release. You've got to tell the public that we're working on this and that we've audited our, our procedures on this and that, and we need to talk about this, Daniel, at our lunch on Friday. We should audit our procedures in billing. There's about nine different components to this whole thing. We need to make sure everything's right, because when we get it right, we don't mess up and then a bad bill doesn't go out. The second thing is, I would like an update, Alicia, on the AMR system, where we're at, and that's a simple, very simple thing, but the second part is harder, Ricky. Ricky Dixon's in the audience and this is good, because I, we can't wait two years for them, the, is it Neptune who does the program? We need alerts. We need real-time alerts to where a citizen can sign up online, that I want to know when my water bill is out of range immediately. I don't want to wait till the end of the month and then the bill gets printed, gets sent to me in the mail, and then it's too late. They need to know right away that they're using more water than they specify is allowed. And it's simple, it's a simple flag or alert system that emails them or text alerts them and says, check your water usage. So, then they call the water department and find out what's, what's, what's going on. They look at their toilet and say, oh, I have a toilet in the upper room running. Thank goodness, they told me. And, and we save water on the city level, they don't get humongous bills. That'll cut down on some complaints right there, real fast, because now you're saying to the citizen, you can specify...
to the citizen, you can specify what your tolerable, tolerable range is, and if it's outside that range, we'll tell you and you're responsible for figuring it out, but at least we're telling you immediately and not waiting. That's going to take, I, I mean, that would resolve half your issues right there. Okay, so that's, I need a report on that when you can give it to me, how long this is going to take, what do we take, money, everything. One more item.
Okay, listen to me. What we're doing now is actually handling the problem instead of getting it onto a future agenda.
Oh, no, that's, that's an agenda item. He understands what I want.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, I've, I've had two run-ins with golf carts. They are not legal in the city of San Angelo, I don't think. If we don't have an ordinance that allows on streets, they run around Bentwood, but we're within two miles of a golf course, so apparently they're legal in Bentwood, but they're not in other neighborhoods. They're not unsafe necessarily if they have the right decals.
That's incorrect.
Let's talk about it.
It's incorrect.
Well, in Santa Rita, it may be unsafe.
There's, from what I've understood, is that if you get it inspected, you have a horn, you have lights.
The law says it, it has to be registered and the state of Texas doesn't register golf carts, so therefore you can't get it registered. And so it's not legal, you have to.
We could, we could go ahead. I know earlier, and we've been emailing, with an opportunity to look at the requirements under state law that they, they are, when they can and under what circumstances be street legal and where they can drive and operate. Perhaps, given that opportunity, I could look up the specific statute because right now I think we're, we have bits and pieces of very good things, but we just need the whole statutory framework under the transportation code.
I can direct what I'm looking for, but I'm looking for entities like apartment complexes or shopping centers to be able to drive from property to property on, on low speed limit roads, and I know the city can give that permission. I don't think we do right now.
If we don't conflict with state law, so if I had an opportunity, I, I could go ahead and show, we, state law may preempt us in that area.
The future agenda item is a discussion of proper use of golf carts and similar to use.
What I've read on state law is that we are granted the authority to allow golf carts. They're not allowed because they can't be registered. Within a golf course range of two miles, yes, they can, but otherwise they're not allowed. We have to allow it. And so I want to allow it under whatever circumstances we come up with.
Rito.
So, and she's going to research it, she's going to come prepared and we're going to have it, right?
Others? Anything else, Mr. Robinson?
No, can you believe it?
No, no. Do you have any?
Say it again, second.
Mr. Silves made a motion.
Second.
Sounds like a second, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.